To join with us in the salute to the flag. My political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Will the secretary please take the roll?
Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent. Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray, absent. Rich Suzak, here.
Rich, would you join me and the commission in the front of the podium here? Rich, it's my pleasure to give this to you, so you actually are the certified zoning enforcement official. It's a pleasure to have you on board and the work that you've done on behalf of the zoning commission. And I know the work you have to go through to get this. And I know there's one person on this commission that's been in that position and who really understands it more than I do. And on behalf of the commission, we want to congratulate you on obtaining this.
I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to work for the town of Enfield in this capacity. And I'd like to say that we strive, myself and the rest of the staffs strive to present you with the information needed for you to make decisions that strive to move Enfield forward. Thank you.
I read the email. I thought it was going to be Charles. And if I thought it was going to be official, I would have worn big boy pants.
It looks better with everybody up there.
Yeah, it does, but I would have wore big boy pants.
Now back to the agenda. Okay, approval of minutes, June 15th. Any additions, errors, omissions?
I had a couple.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of June 15th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, these are very minor. Page, page three, Martin, it's L-E-V-I-T-Z. Levitz, like the old furniture place. That was in a couple of places, so you'll want to change that.
Is that the June 15th?
Hmm?
June 15th, okay.
Mm-hmm. And page four, the first paragraph, second paragraph, I'm sorry. Commissioner Higley stated that the attorney could provide, I think an A would work in there, provide a written response. Because it says provide written A response. So I think it would be better saying provide a written response. And I only have one more, page 10. Well, it was nice to get the packet a little early because I had more time to read it.
Right, seven or eight I's are better than.
Okay, page 10, one, two, three, four, five. It says, it starts Chairman Durin stated that a previous zoning commission. Last, second sentence, a section of the school property was put aside specifically for the building. I think there should be an of in there, the building of a road. It was great, great job whoever did these, and that's all I had.
Anything further? I have just one on page eight. In this discussion, I said Chairman Durin stated the commission's concern with health welfare because he questioned me that we didn't really have the, shouldn't be doing that. Somewhere along there, I had said something to him that his client had approved the conditions that we had given him. And that's not in there. And I thought if this goes where I think it's going, it should be in there if they get the tapes. Well, I don't know where it was.
The attorney showed his client knew there was going to be a public hearing.
That's something different.
That's, that's different. This is that he agreed to the conditions. Anything further?
Mr. Chair, I'll amend my motion to include modifications.
All right.
Second.
All in favor as amended?
All abstain.
Five, four, none against, and one abstention. I, just generally before we get to them, and because it's a comment, I'll, on most of them. On the beginning, the secretary takes the roll. But I notice on some of these that we come along and there's places where, because legally, a lot of the lawyers won't look except at the one section that they're being appealed. And we have, all it says is secretary took the roll, and it doesn't list who's there. And sometimes I have to appoint somebody sitting in. And I know it's a lot of extra work to type in who's sitting there every time, but if the number's called, it's got to have who's sitting in on that particular call. And likewise, at the end, if there's not the total seven votes for, you've got to list who voted for and against. And it's just a general comment because later on, there's several of them that end up that way. I'm sorry, I took the time in between, okay. Next one's July 20th.
29th.
Did you want to act on June 29th?
I am sorry, July. Roger.
We had June 29th.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes for June 29th?
I am sorry, I jumped.
Second.
I rolled them overnight. Any additions, errors, or omissions?
I had one. On the first page, let's see, under XZA 17-01, one, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph says, Mr. O'Brien stated that the definition of a lot in the town of Enfield refers to one parcel with one principal building. I think it should be principal P-A-L, not P-L-E. And that's in three spots in that paragraph.
Yeah, P-A-L's right.
P-A-L.
Any others, errors, or omissions, or additions? Hearing then, all in favor as amended?
I have the abstain. I was absent.
Okay, well, all in favor as amended then. Four.
I'm abstaining.
And two abstentions. Four, four, none against, and two abstentions, July 13th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, July 13th?
Second.
Motion's made seconded, and any errors, additions, or omissions? Hearing then, all in favor, opposed, no abstentions. Six, zero, zero. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, July 20th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's made seconded, any additions, errors, or omissions?
I have one. Page 22, one, two, three, four. Actually, it would be the fourth paragraph up from the bottom, it's just, the gentleman's name is misspelled, it's Furma with an R in it. So F-U-R-M-A. And that's it for me.
Yeah, and two places. Three places it needs to be changed.
Okay.
Oh, yes, Furman.
And I also have one on page 21. Fifth line up, or line nine down, I guess. Spelling on Kohl is a little error. The whole is K-O-H-L, not K-H-O-L.
It's okay.
Seven up from the bottom.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, I have several. The, on page one. It already, you've got a problem. It says Secretary Suzick took the role and read the legal ad. Chairman Durin asked three times if there was anyone from the public. That really doesn't go with a public hearing because they, they do that prior. That's out of line there somewhere.
Well, it's on the public participation.
Yeah.
Well, you also do it.
No, under our business.
No.
No, I do, I do it after, yeah, when we start it after we read, yeah. But this is in here without.
Right.
It's, it's repeated. Then. Then it goes, Director O'Brien read two conditions and I closed the public hearing. There's nothing in between. I don't know if this was. Was this for the letter that she wanted it extended?
Yeah, it also says that you closed it, and then it says we continued it, so.
Yeah, I said, Chairman Durin questioned, public hearing should be April or July, and it should be July, not April.
But the sentence before says you closed it.
Yeah, I know, and I, I think you. Yeah, I know. So something's wrong in there. And then it says, Secretary, Mary Scott and Charles Lad approved 2857, and the motion passed. And then the resolution, and resolved.
I think what happened is.
Made a motion to.
I think what happened was the motion said a public hearing had been held in April. And as I recall, Mary Scott, who reads it, said.
Yes, she does.
It should be July, so that was, it was referring to what was in the motion. I mean, you could cross that.
All I know is it's got to be straightened out.
It's got to be straightened out. So the motion was corrected to say July, but the original draft we gave you, it said, whereas a public hearing has held in April. And Mary read it and said, I think you mean July. And so that's what Raquel picked up in a minute, so I think we can straighten it out.
Okay, then, yeah, I know, maybe just, I'll point that out to you, and then we won't probably be able to pass it tonight. And then on page six, and this is where I was starting, that the secretary took the role, read the legal ad, and then there's nothing. And it should be present were. And then the reason was, it's, and not the reason that we did, voted for it, but the presentation was made by, and I don't know who, and the information requested was presented. Because this was all we needed, we, all we needed was the, the maps that Rich had asked for, and the town engineer.
Right.
And then we passed it, it says the motion passed with 7-0 votes, it sounds like we're voting.
That was to include the previous complete record, though.
Yeah, I know, which is all right.
Which was a motion.
Yeah, but the reason we kept it open was to get the information that we got that night. And that should be in there because otherwise, that's. Also, it would say the reason we kept it open was to get this material.
Right, but we wanted the other record into the record for this one.
Yeah, and it says that there. It says.
That's what the vote was. Put that record into the current record.
Well, all right, that's, okay, all right.
Yeah, I think on page nine, what we just need to do is add, add who voted.
Okay.
Which is your point.
All right. I just, you're right on that, I'm sorry. And then, let's see, page 16, I think the same thing occurs. Yeah, who, who's present, the read the legal ad, and it's who's present is, is gone. Page 20, I think, is the same thing.
So we can revise them to make sure that everyone has who was there.
Page 22 is the same thing. And page 23 was the same. And I don't think, I don't think there was any votes that weren't 7-0, but if there were, we've got to have the votes in there. But without the votes, where it says votes are 7-0, you don't know who voted which way. The last page is different, on page 23, Chairman Durin asked if there were no outside speaker. It should be any, they asked if they had any outside speaker.
Oh, for the.
Yeah, that was for the church.
Yeah, speakers for you.
But it's just a good, that's just a word. So you want to redo those, and we'll take them up?
I have another quick correction, too. On page 16, I'm not sure what the gentleman's name was, if it was Manny Singh or Manny Sings. So if we can just make sure it's consistent between the two paragraphs of who the gentleman is that's speaking.
Is there a way to correct that? Because sometimes we do get names in, and I know you don't pick them up, I don't either, so. But not everybody has a card.
When they bring experts in, they're supposed to bring a card in so that they can give it to staff, so staff doesn't have to worry about it.
Well, the experts can, but if you have people out of the audience, you can't, too.
Okay.
So other years, or sometimes, we've asked for spelling.
Yeah.
Maybe we do that. Okay, what do we do with these moves? The motion was to approve, so we'll have to vote on it.
Well, if you're comfortable that we understand what the changes are, you could approve them, and we'll make those changes, and the secretary will read them before he signs them. Or if you want to table them and bring them back, we'll table them and bring them back.
They should be tabled. The motion to table.
The only issue is that.
Well.
This, these minutes are part of the court case, and we do have a transcript of that meeting because of that, of the portion of the meeting having to do with 35 Manning Road. So, and the draft, so if, I would like to get the, the improvement, the minutes as approved to the town attorney to be part of your case record. If not, I guess they got the transcript and the draft minutes, although we could revise them and say a second, a second draft.
I'm approved.
I think we should wait. If it's a court case, it needs to be 150% correct. You don't want the town looking, or us looking like.
What I'm saying is you have a, you have, you have an actual transcribed, well, not of the whole meeting, but of the, okay, that's fine.
And they have, you have the YouTube, so.
To make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, don't we?
Yeah, but if you have a motion to table.
Make a motion.
I move to amend the motion to table till the next meeting, the minutes of July.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Second.
Motion's to table, discussion, all in favor? Okay, they are tabled. All right. At this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who's present, provided you may not discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda. Any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the, of the commission, or any matter where a decision, decision of the commission is pending. Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address the commission under those conditions, and we shall move on. Next is public hearing 2867. Secretary, please read the legal ad and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 24th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing 2867, petition for a zoning text change to add a new subsection to Section 10.30.5 of the Enfield zoning regulations. Key up Enfield LP applicant. Extension received to August 24th, 2017, dated this 11th day of August 2017. Charles Durin, chairman, information is available at the Enfield Planning Office, Enfield Town Hall. And that occurred in the Journal of Choir on August 11th, 2017, and August 21st, 2017. Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent. Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Linda DeGray is absent, and Richard Suzak is here.
Sir, anyone, I will open this, we have a letter which I will read, but by law, we do have to open it. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor or against the application. We have received a, a petition from, well, we, this.
The, by mutual agreement, the applicant granted us an extension until October 7th, and would like to make the presentation on September 7th. There was one gentleman here earlier who wanted to speak, and I did inform him that it would be rolled over till September 7th.
Well, this is a KOP signing.
Oh, this, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm on Pride. On this one here, the, the applicant is waiting to see what you guys do with your version of the regulations, and has granted an extension until September, and will not be here tonight. Gave us a letter saying they won't be here tonight.
Right, I do have that, and I was going to read it, so, or that's the motion that's there. But I wanted to make sure we didn't have to act on it.
No, they, they grant us an extension to, to September the 8th, at the last meeting in July.
Okay. Chair, will entertain a motion?
I move, we accept the extension of the PH 2867 to September 7th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Motion's made seconded to extend to the September 7th, 2017. Any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, opposed, it's unanimous. That's why I will make sure that we. Zoning map amendment, I'm sorry, public hearing 2873, Connecticut Avenue. Application to change zone from residential R-33 to business local BL. Secretary, please read the legal notice and again take the roll.
The planning, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 24th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2873 for Connecticut Avenue, application to change the zone from residential R-33 to business local BL. Pride Limited Partnerships owner applicant, map 35, lot 106, residential zone R-33. Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent. Charles Lad.
Here.
Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray is absent, and Richard Suzak is here.
Okay.
So this is the one that I was speaking on before, by mutual agreement with the applicant. I would like to make his presentation next week, I mean, next meeting on September the 7th.
Because we talked, I have to open this to public because it was in. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Chair, will entertain a motion to accept the request to continue.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue public hearing 2873 to our next meeting of September 7th, 2017. Second.
Motion's made seconded, discussion.
On the agenda, it says that the extension is received to October 7th, so I'm assuming it's correct that it's September 7th, correct?
Right, Jen, Jen asked for an extension till October, and he granted it, but he would like, he gave us an extension, but he would like to make his presentation in September.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, he has provided an extension until October 7th, is on the memo that's in front of you. But he, he wants to be on the agenda on the 7th. So actually, you have several people, and you're already setting the agenda whether you know it or not. Okay, we'll keep Rich going here. Okay, this is, we've amended because of the thing, public here, Skidico Design Overlay District Map Amendment. Rich, you're going to read each one of these separately, and I guess the first one we've got is Skidico Design, XZA 17-06.
Okay.
And the applicant is the town, and you'll have to read these, and then, make it short, you don't have to read the people that are absent, just take the people that are present. And anybody you don't read isn't here.
Okay.
Chairman, the clerk is saying that you never voted on Pride, you made the motion, but you didn't hold a vote.
I thought we did. I'm sorry. All in favor of the Pride, opposed, it's extended. I wish I had someone.
That's a good thing.
My wife was, I'm sure. All right. Trying that we, okay, we've got a lot of these. You ready, Rich?
Yes, and I'm only going to read the opening paragraph once, and then I'll just can repeat the zoning text changes according to the number that we're going to do. So, "The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 24th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications." And the first one is, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I believe, nine total applications?
And the publication date.
Correct, and the publication date for all of them is, is August 11th, 2017, in the Journal of Choir, and August 21st, 2017, in the Journal of Choir. And the first one is XZA 70-06, proposed Skidico Design Overlay District Regulations, Planning and Zoning Commission applicant. Charles Durin.
Here.
Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman, the impetus of this regulation really goes back to a proposal, if, Jen, if you'd. flip to the next slide, on, that was actually next to this location on the intersection of Brook and Hazard Avenue. And at that point in time, there was a proposal for a CVS, and there was a lot of discussion with the community about what types of standards they would like to see in that, in the Skidaco area. And so, this is really grew out of that application. And basically, what the goal is, is to establish a more of a village feel to that area, and a design district. We have several in town, and if you recall, the last meeting we were at on Enfield, on Enfield Street, actually, on King Street, portion of that Enfield-King Street design district, we were able to get better design on the former Namco building, because it is in a design district. So, a design district regulation allows the Commission to, on one hand, have more control over the architectural appearance of buildings, but more than that, if you go back, Jen, to the very first slide, this is Skidaco Plaza, and that's pretty much what the retail development is under the regulations in that area, whereby the, there's a large open space, a span of parking in the front. The buildings are set way back from the street. So, the goal here is to be able to move the buildings up closer to the street, have them present to the street, have a pedestrian presence. If you think about the CVS that's over in Suffield, which is right up to the street, has park benches, has landscaping, the sidewalk, some artwork, and benches. So, the whole goal of the Skidaco Plaza Design District is to establish a village feel. And so, the specific regulations, taking them a little out of order. So, what we're doing here, as we're saying, by special permit, you can apply for a special development application, and that the building design elements, materials, texture, color used on exterior walls and roofs shall be those associated with traditional New England architecture. Preferred building materials shall be brick, architectural stone, and wood, including narrow width siding, clapboards, which shingles a reasonable equivalent. So, the architectural details will exhibit a New England village character, and the preferred site design is for buildings to be located near the street with parking either on the side or in the rear. Parking in the front of the building will be restricted, and, as I mentioned, the pedestrian amenities such as the sidewalks, the benches, the lighting, and so forth, similar to what you find in Hazardville, would be required. So, I'm not sure if we have another slide on Hazard, on this one here. So, that's basically what we're trying to do on this here, and again, if you think about the Webster Bank Building that sits there empty right now, that building is slated to be demolished, so the question was, would be, where would that building be built that would be replaced? And under these regulations, that building wouldn't be, wouldn't be sitting back in the, you know, in the shopping center, but would have to be up at the street, along the avenue. And it would not have a sea of parking around it, such as the present Webster Bank Building. And so, those are the regulations. And the second thing after, if you adopt the regulations, then we can go to where they would take effect, and that's the, what's currently on the, on the screen. So, at that, I would just stop, and happy to answer any questions. You have the regulations in front of you. They were, they were filed in the town clerk's office, they were referred to the Capitol Region Council of Governments, the Capitol Region Council of Governments found no interlocal, intermunicipal conflicts, they were distributed as required to all of the surrounding towns, and we received no comments. They were, and they were advertised twice, as the secretary has read. So, they have followed all of the procedural requirements, and, you know, we would hope that you would give them your favorable consideration.
Questions?
I just wanted to say that this appears to me to be very well thought, and I especially like the site design emphasis on where parking is. I think that staff has put a lot of time into this one, and I'm really a supporter of it.
I would have to agree, and I think it's a step in the right direction in terms of towards the 21st century versus the 18th or 19th century. So, I think that, you know, times are changing, and we have to sort of keep up with those times so that we could, you know, maybe stay a little ahead of them, although it's going to be tough.
I think the intent is basically to make it a walking area so people can walk from place to place and don't have to cross a large extent of amissite to get to a building.
And I like the building design elements, that you actually identified some of the things that we're looking for. I think that's a definite plus for me, so I'm glad to see that. I think this is great.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Please come forward, ma'am, and, or sir, and give your name and address.
Can I just use this mic here?
Absolutely.
You just have to push the button.
The button should be red, if it's on.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Beth Alessquiz. I live at 1 Leary Road, which turns into Skidaco Street.
Right, yes.
I'm on the corner of Broadbrook Road.
Right.
And we were here before, a couple of years ago, from about the CVS.
Right.
And it's not a matter of what the building looks like, brick, stone, you know, pretty, village, it's the traffic and the people. There's just too much traffic going through there. We have, we had a study done, there's 800 cars going past my house and up Skidaco Street a day, over 800 cars, because they're cutting through.
To avoid the light.
Yes. So, I know this means the plaza and everything, but it's not the only industrial. There's Angelina's in Duncan's Donuts Plaza, there's Danny's, there's the carpet store. All of that traffic is coming down our little neighborhood. They're flying through there. You might as well take the stop sign out, because they don't stop, even the tobacco guys, which you want to give them, you know, a little leeway, because they're working hard. I mean, they're just flying through. People come around my corner from Broadbrook. I can't be, if I'm raking or something, blowing this, they come around that corner, like at 40 miles an hour, coming over the bridge and then turning onto Leary Road. It's just, it's just the traffic. I mean, you can make the buildings pretty and everything, but that's not the point. It's a neighborhood with people trying to, there's people down the dead end, they walk their kids in the carriage and stuff, I hear them going by, you know, it's, something's got to be done about that traffic. Somebody's, something's been done with the lights on Hazard Avenue or something, because they're cutting through. And to make it pedestrian friendly, I mean, you're going to have people lying on the, you know, being knocked in the air. I mean, they don't slow down, they drive even faster when they see you. It's something, I mean, before all this is done, something, the issue of traffic needs to be addressed. I just can't see, you know, fixing the parking lots and...
There might be a way, and I don't know. At the intersection, I know.
It's just horrible, it's...
And I don't know, you'd have to talk with the council.
And it's getting worse, I mean...
Maybe we could refer, I don't know if the traffic safety, if they could...
I mean, I've called the police, and they can't, they don't do anything. We've asked them to sit and watch for people going through the stop sign, but they come one day, and they catch a couple people. So, it's, and it's getting worse. Even, you know, I think, oh, the weekend, I can relax, you know, I can, but it's even, even when there isn't traffic on Hazard Ave, at that intersection, even on the weekend, people fly through there, just thinking they're taking a shortcut or something, which makes no sense, but...
I know, and...
So, I'm sorry, I thank you for your time, but you can see I'm just, it's just the traffic is just...
I'll ask them and see if...
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Traffic safety officer can do anything with that. I don't know if they could make it one way from Enfield Street, from Hazard Avenue, down the other way.
Well, I was going to say, I'm not a big fan of one-way streets. I've lived on a couple of them, and they have more minuses, in my opinion, than buses.
Well, they'd have to follow the two, as a problem.
But, but there are traffic calming measures. I'm not saying speed bumps, but there, there's names for...
They're in our regulations.
Yeah, and I don't think that they're in our regulations, but they could...
Yes, they are, unless they took, somebody took them out.
Well, the point is, Roger has the names of them.
I think you want to get all the public comments in, and then I can respond to them, and you can discuss them.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Yes, please, please, name and address for the record.
My name is Sharon Wilgus. I live at 18 and 20 Skidaco Street, which is a two-family. I live next to Mary Beth. I'm on the corner of Skidaco Street and Leary Road, which is a three-way intersection. I'm going to reiterate, because this just happened to me the other day, but reiterate what Mary Beth said about the traffic. When I'm doing yard work, I literally cannot step on the road without looking in three directions three different times. The traffic doesn't slow down, there, for some reason, was a car parked on the opposite side of the road that I was working, and cars were swerving around me and literally coming within three or four feet of me, at higher than the speed limit. There was a recent accident within the last month, a bad one, on the corner of Broadbrook Road and 190, and the traffic was all routed down our street for hours, solid line of traffic all around our house. She's right, she hit it dead-on, we don't care what the building looks like, we need to control the traffic before we bring in any kind of new business or industry, or try to enhance the area for pedestrians. It's a dangerous area for pedestrians, it's a dangerous area for cars. And living on that corner for 30-plus years, I can tell you it's gotten drastically worse, and it's getting much worse, and there's dogs, there's animals, there's kids, you know, it's, there's going to be a fatality on our street soon, and it's all going to come back.
We can't do anything about traffic, if we don't control it.
I understand you can't, but it can be diverted, and it can also be encouraged not to go in that direction.
Right, but we have no control on that.
Well, we've been trying to do this for years. We've been trying to address the one-way issue and the village issue recently. So, we've been trying to bring up the, what we can to do about it.
We understand that, but basically, again, all we can do is, as far as answer some of the other questions and problems that have come about.
Well, this is the biggest problem, is the traffic. So, that's obviously been brought up before, and that's why CVS lost.
That would be with the town council, or the police department, really.
But it was just here that we brought this issue up when we had CVS. Traffic was a big issue at that point, and it was brought through this forum.
But even with the traffic, we wouldn't be able to stop a CVS if they would wish to come in if it's owned properly, to a certain degree.
Well, it didn't work twice, so...
Well, there were other reasons that were going.
Okay, but, once again, I'm reiterating...
This is to understand our position, that what we can and have control over, and what we don't have.
Right. Well, you're trying to encourage a pedestrian-friendly, village-type atmosphere to draw people in, which is going to draw traffic in, which is our concern, and that's what you're going to hear from every one of the people in our neighborhood.
Right, and it's just the whole town working together, ma'am.
Yeah, I've seen it before, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in favor or against the application?
Hi, my name is Ron Stain. I'm on 15 Skidaco Street in Enfield. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I've spoken with Roger a few times on the phone. I think design overlay is a wonderful idea, if you can incorporate elements that limit if we're going to have things come into our neighborhood, which is what basically precipitated all of this anyway. If you can incorporate things that limit what actually can go there to timeframes of hours of business and things like that, as opposed to how pretty the building is, that's more important to us, as opposed to...
We'd agree, but we cover everything, right?
And I don't know, I haven't seen the, you know, what the parameters are going to be and all of that. However, you know, at the end of the day, when it, something gets built, we have to live with it. Roger had said to me one time, you know, "Oh, don't you guys, aren't you guys tired of looking at ugly garage?" Because we've had nice conversations before, and I said, "That ugly garage creates no traffic, we like it that way." I mean, so, so, I understand wanting to make the neighborhood pretty, but nothing happens in that garage, and we like it that way, because it's bad enough as it is. So, if there's a way in your design overlay to kind of limit the CVS wanting to build a, you know, mega store there, or if there's something in your, in your, that would be in your power, that's what we'd be interested in talking about.
We understand, and that's what we try to do. The problem is, you may have somebody, not necessarily the ugly garage, but you have people that would like to do things in various spaces out there that may or may not be that ugly garage, which you would have, which we do control, so it's, it's the overall picture that we work on.
I understand that.
This is one piece of it.
I understand that, it's just, we would like to make sure that it's not going to be a 24-hour 7-Eleven, and I'm not using names, I'm just, you know, 24-hour, you know, traffic, light-heavy, you know, you know, light polluting, all of those things. There's, eventually, we know we're going to lose this battle, and something's going in there, but, you know, we're going to have to live with it when it's done, and we'd like as much input as we can.
Well, you'll have the input, you always have public hearings, but there are laws that we have to follow, state and local, and that's what we try to do, is, as Rich said real early, to get these updated to now, and instead of back to 20 years ago.
Is there anything within your power to limit anything? No, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to suggest is that the way that a public hearing goes is you, we, we listen to all, the Commission listens to all of your issues, and then I will try to answer them, and then you can come back if you want after that, but it's not really a back and forth.
No, it isn't, but I...
No, I'm...
There isn't many, that's what I try to explain, what our, what our ability is. And basically, it's public health, welfare, and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I think that the fact is, right now, that under the site, that anybody can comment under the site plan requirements, and they can propose a development, and when we, when the CVS came in, the reason why that it was not approved was that it did not meet the buffer requirements. Recall, that was a major issue, and there were other issues with respect to site plan. But the difference between site plan and special permit is that on special permit, the Commission has a lot more latitude to consider neighborhood impact such as traffic. So, I think what is in front of you tonight actually will address those issues, because it gives the Commission more latitude that, in developing it, and what it says is that if your existing business and you want to put a small little addition on, you're under the old site plan requirements, and you're not, you're not subject to any additional regulation. But if you're doing a major renovation to your, to a business, or you're doing new construction, then it's under the design district, it's a special permit, and the Commission has to consider health, welfare, and public safety, and we know traffic is an issue. And with, I remember the conversation very well with the developers on the CVS, and originally, they were trying to address the traffic, and they actually had a proposal that addressed some of the traffic in terms of an additional left-hand turn lane, some widening, and then all of a sudden... And then all of a sudden, they said, "But, you know, this is a site plan. We don't really have to do that anyhow." And so, they withdrew it. We are, you are on state roads there, so state DOT would have to get involved in the traffic. I hear the neighbors loud and clear that there are, there are existing traffic problems there now, let alone what, what may happen in the future. And I know that Michael Cirillo, I've had this conversation with Michael, and he's very much involved in, now he's on the Transportation Committee down at the Capital Region Council of Governments. And we've had some conversations, as you recall, the CROG did do a study many years ago of that, of the neighborhood there, and then it sort of died on the vine.
No, yeah, it's supposed, it's still on the plans, but it's way back.
Well, you know, but if you don't have somebody sitting there at those meetings-
Right.
-like moving them along, so, I think, I think there are two issues here. I mean, the first issue is existing traffic regardless of what your zoning regulations are, and that's being handled right now between the tra, the Police Department Traffic Division and the Director of Development Services. And then this issue, which is if somebody comes in tomorrow on Webster Bank, because you know that Webster Bank building was sold to O'Reilly's Auto Parts. And, and there is a interest all the time, because the matter, fact of the matter is, if you've got a, a building sitting there with an abandoned gas station on it, eventually somebody's gonna come forward. And the question is, if they do come forward, what, what controls does the Planning and Zoning Commission have in place? So, I would argue that, that the neighborhood is more protected under this proposal than they are now.
Yes.
Roger, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know if this is, you know, under a special permit, but, you know, with, working with the police department, even putting up signage, like local traffic only strictly enforced, or even dead-end, you know, anything like that to kind of discourage people from using that neighborhood, I don't know if that's something we can request at some point.
So, it's illegal.
Are they?
Right, and, and that, I mean, that is in the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission when you do your plan of conservation and development as well, if you identify local neighborhood traffic things, just like when you consider the town's capital budget. This last year, you made recommendations to the town council with respect to where you believe sidewalks should go. You can make recommendations to the town council with where you believe traffic calming measures that, that Commissioner Higley mentioned, where they could go. And, so, it is something that could be looked at a little more intensely than it, than it has been, but that's generally when the commission has its planning hat on, as opposed to its zoning hat on. And right, so I think, you know, right now, we're trying to do the best we can, which is whatever goes in there and I, you know, if I characterize it as a make-beautiful effort, I mean, I think it's a lot more than a make-beautiful effort, so I don't want to-
We, Roger, we do-
-mislead you on that. But if in the process, we make it beautiful, that would be okay, right?
Roger, and we do have in our plan, we spent some time a while back-
Yeah.
-because of, I believe it was St. James and St. Thomas, they did approve bumpouts and roundabouts and different islands that are in the plans, but they've never been implemented. We've never used them.
As part of a separate agenda item, you could-
They're traffic-
You could, you could ask that they be reactivated or looked at or pushed up on the queue.
Yep. They're, they're in there.
Perfect, thank you.
They just haven't been used or, and I don't know if we have, we have the ability, I guess, to make the suggestion, but I don't know if we can put them in. Anyone else would like to address the commission?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, this does stem down into the area that they were talking about, the street, Leary Road, and in the old section of Skidaco where the old post office and the monument is. So, it does go all the way down into that section. Oh, no, it's in there. I just, because I had asked him to do that, that's what's down here on there, the gray, that's the gray area. Yeah, right. Okay. Oh, that's the, yeah. Okay.
So, you have a draft resolution for your consideration.
Okay, 17 XZA then 1706. Do you have anything else, Roger, or I close the public hearing for this? I get the right one I'm on.
1706.
1706. Well, I'll close public hearing 1706, XZA 1706.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept XZA 1706, proposed Skidaco Design Overlay District Regulations, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a zoning text amendment application to add a new section 8.75 to the Enfield zoning regulations entitled "Skidaco Design Overlay District", and whereas the proposed regulation was referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment, and whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed regulations will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities, and whereas the proposed regulations were circulated to the surrounding communities for comment and no comments were received, and whereas the proposed regulations were advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer, whereas a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017, and whereas the proposed regulations are consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development, now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves XZA 1706 for the addition of Section 8.75 entitled "Skidaco Design Overlay District", with an effective date of September 8, which is 15 days after approval of the regulation.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion, as stated earlier, I believe this will be an improvement to the general area and hopefully will solve some of the problems that we have out there.
Yeah, and, and, you know, unfortunately, we, we can't address, you know, people's habits of, of how they travel, you know. Unfortunately, you know, there's cars and there's, you know, people have a certain mentality when, when they're driving a car, so. But what we need to do is, is sort of be conscious of the fact that, you know, everything that we do affects somebody in, in another location, so that, you know, if everybody had that in, in mind when they were doing that, then I think that it would be a better place. But some people are sometimes just in a hurry and they don't realize the impact they have on other people's lives.
Frankly, I'm gonna, gonna vote to approve, simply because I think it gives us way more control over-
What's going on?
What's going on in special design district, or design overlay district, and, including some traffic control. With the other site plans, we have absolutely not much to say about it. It's the last applicant there said, "Well, we don't need to do that. It's a site plan, so." If we have a special use for it, then they do need to do that. So, hopefully this will make things a little better in the long run.
Anyone else? Yes, Mary?
I'm going to vote for this, because I do think it gives us a little bit more discretion when it comes to special permit. And I think that will help us to deal with some of the concerns that have been brought up. And I think that this is a, it's a good way to start to move us forward and also deal with some of the issues that we have going on in our, in our neighborhoods and areas.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? No abstentions, if you're honest? Next one is XZMA 1710, and this is the zone map. And this is on Skidaco, and that's the map in front of you. And for the people from the old part of Skidaco, this does cover the, the old section all the way down and then the general area of Skidaco, which again, as stated, will give us some control by the design. Secretary, please take the role and read the, read the legal notice section.
All right. The XZMA 1710, proposed changes to the zoning map, which are the addition of the Skidaco Overlay District and the consolidation of the Lake District's Planning and Zoning Commission applicant. Charles Durin.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Yeah.
Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Rich Suzak is here.
Mr. Chairman, this is a discussion we had, which is, do we create the design district and we create regulations, or do we create the regulations and then create the design district? But, on one thing, by writing, by creating the regulations, you're putting them in the zoning book, by creating the district, you're, you're amending the map. And the streets, the streets are Hazard Avenue, Broadbrook Road, Skidaco Street, Taylor Road, Webster Road, and Columbia Road. So, I think in answer to the question before, it doesn't extend down to Leary Road, but it certainly will, by what you're doing here, impact what traffic goes down that street, eventually. So, the, this is your adopted map here, no overlay. This is your proposed map with the overlay. You have a small version of it there. The, the only other thing that we're doing on this with the, with the map itself is that if you looked over here, you had, for some reason, you had a, a Lake Overlay District and a Crescent Lake Overlay District, and we're just consolidating them to refer to the Lake Overlay District, and the Lake Overlay District would, is, includes both lakes. So, that's kind of like a housekeeping thing, but since we're doing it. But the main impetus for changing the map tonight is to add that, so, town-wide, we have the, you know, the, the King Street, Enfield Street Design District, and we have the Hazardville Design District, and now we're adding the-
Actually, it does cover-
Skidaco Design District.
Did I leave one out? No.
Okay.
And this map change was referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments, who said that they had no issues with it. We referred it to them anyhow, even though they said they didn't really need to see it. We also notified all the budding towns, and it was filed in the office of the town clerk, and it was advertised twice in the newspaper, and it has been on file and as well in our office. So, everything that needed to be done as far as state statute has been done. So, the commission is free to, tonight, make the district smaller. If you wanted to make it bigger, you would have to continue it on. So, I guess the, the only thing that you would, you could consider tonight as part of your deliberation, I, you know, one is, you adopt it or don't. If you adopt the regulations, you gotta say where it's gonna go. So, the only question would be if you wanted to make it smaller than what is being proposed.
Okay, let me go, anything from, from the commission first? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public speak in favor or against the application? Last call to speak in favor or against the application. Any of the commissioners?
I think that it's a, I, I couldn't see any reason to make it smaller. I think it, since we just passed the verbiage that's going in the zoning regulations, the district itself will be helpful to an area that's just starting to become tired and needs to be protected and helped along. So, I'm gonna be in favor of it.
I, I agree with that. The only, the only thing, and again, I think maybe once we pass this, if we consider possibly later, depending on the people, that, that section down towards Leary Road where, oh, there's Skidaco Street and Leary meet, is really the old center of Skidaco. That's where the old post office and the old monument is, down in there. And, I don't know, I haven't been down there for quite a while, but some of those buildings might be worth protecting. So, it's something that can maybe consider at a later date. I wouldn't hold this section up, just for that, but it's something to consider at a later date to add that down.
Mr. Chair, I, I also agree with that, in terms of, you know, the, the only thing that we have going against us is, is that that is a residential zone.
It is.
And, you know, the thing is, if, if we're looking to possibly, you know, modify the, you know, the zone, then, you know, basically, it, it's one of those kind of things where, you know, as, as things start developing and things start being utilized, it, it could be such that, you know, some of those homes, you know, might want to change to be, you know, a, a different type of, you know, mixed use or something where, you know, where that is, you know, more or less a, a little more of protect the community. Right now, you know, it's a pass-through, but eventually, it might develop into, you know, a community where you can have retail on the first floor and maybe some, you know, upper-level residential things, and, you know, again, enhance some of that, you know, that feeling that we're trying to, you know, create in this area. So, in that sense, you know, unfortunately, our, our hands are tied as we, we haven't, you know, proposed any kind of zone change, or are looking to propose any kind of zone change, or force anybody out of their homes. But, but it's, it's one of those kind of things where, you know, things do develop and, you know, and, you know, I think that, you know, coupled with some of the other regulations that we're passing, you know, today, it, it also would lend itself to enhance or create, you know, a, a difference in that community where, where it's not just a pass-through, where, you know, people might actually stop and, and actually enjoy, you know, the ambiance of the area. Because it is a nice little, you know, little area, and, and, you know, and it has its, its own character. But, you know, right now, everybody's just zooming by because, you know, there's nothing to, no reason to stop. And if, if ultimately, you know, we create a reason to stop, you know, maybe, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the traffic won't be as just, you know, zooming by, there'll be some reason to stop. So, in that sense, I, I am also in favor of this.
That's why I said, keep our eye on it in case the pressures are to-
Right, and, and things, you know, we have to, you know, sort of anticipate development and, and then you sort of keep an eye on how things are developing, so.
Right.
In that sense, I think that, you know, we, we need to, you know, look towards the future and hopefully, you know, enhance something that, that will, might occur.
Anyone else?
Yes, Roger, I have a question. Why wasn't the gas station lot, which is BG on there, why wasn't that included into that?
Gas station lot, it's, it's-
It's in there. It's BG, though, it's not- It's a BG hatch.
It's the-
Oh, I see, okay, there's-
On the corner.
I'm sorry, it's a business local that's not there.
Yeah, it's, it's the cross, it's the crosshatching.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Miss Reddick.
Okay, anything further? Sharon, uh, well, I have to-
You had me worried for a minute.
I'm sorry. I'll close XZMA 1710.
I put a picture up on the wall and I don't include it on the map.
Well, we get confused at times, at least I do, and we'll get it straightened out. I close the hearing, yes.
I'd like to put forth a motion to approve XZMA 1710, proposed amendments to the Enfield zoning map, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a zoning map amendment application to add the Skidaco Design Overlay District and to combine the Crescent Lake Overlay District and the Shaker Pines Lake Overlay District into one Lake Overlay District. And whereas the proposed changes to the Enfield zoning map have been referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment, and whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed map- Governments found that the proposed map amendments will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities, and whereas the map amendment was advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer, whereas a public hearing was held on August 24th, 2017, and whereas the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the infield zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development. Now therefore, be it resolved, the infield planning and zoning commission hereby approves XZMA 1710 for a zone, zoning map amendment for the addition of the Skidaco design overlay district to the infield zoning map and the consolidation of the Crescent Lake overlay district and the Shaker Pines overlay district into one lake overlay district with an effective date of September 8th, 2017, 15 days after the approval.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? No abstentions? Unanimous? Okay, Rich, here we go again. XZA 1703.
XZA 1703, proposed lake district regulations, planning and zoning commission applicant. Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
And Richard Suzak's here.
Okay. Roger?
Um, Mr. Chairman, first, while Rich is still here tonight, I wanna say that he used to photographer on many of these pictures, and when I said, Rich, you gotta go out and get me some, Rick rather, you gotta go out and get me some, some pictures of the district. So with apologies to anybody who may live in these houses who didn't wanna be put up on the screen, where we were just trying to show typical houses on the lakes. So the, the issue with the houses on the lakes is that they have an R33 zone, and the lots are nowhere near the size of an R33 zone. The other thing is, is in the regulations, at some point in time, it was determined that the front yard of the houses is the lakeside. And so you've got the front yard that faces the street considered the rear yard. So a lot of times, this has, as I understand it, from the folks who've come in to talk to us in the office since I've been here, creates an issue in terms of if they wanna put a minor addition on or improve the property, how did they go about that? So the choice is either to apply to the zoning board of appeals where you would have to prove a hardship, and the hardship, you know, has, has to be with, with the land. And so this was an effort to, um, say, well, is there something we can do to that? So we came up with this concept that, and it's, it's, it's a common practice where you have non-standard setbacks or side yards in which you take the block face, the block face is from an intersection to an intersection, and I know some of the residents came in and asked that question in the office. So in, in the instance here, Lake, uh, Rick was explaining that there would be, that would be a long intersection, but, so basically, you're taking all of the houses on the lake and you're saying, okay, the setback, the, the side yard may be X, but no, nobody on that lake has that, that setback. So you would say, well, what is the average existing setback? And then you would use that and say that if you have room on one side, that you could use that. And this was, and you, and it would be by special permit, which means that it may work for health, welfare, and public safety, it may not. And so it would be, each one would be considered as an individual situation. So it may be perfectly fine to, uh, to, to contemplate improvements on one property, may not be fine due to whatever the individual circumstances are on another. So again, this is, uh, this is an effort where, where folks have come in and said over a period of time that, you know, the alternative is to try to completely rezone that area and create a whole new zone and determine what the setbacks would be and so forth and so on and so forth. So I think this is a middle ground, which says, why don't we just use what's there, which has developed over the years? And so that's, that's the reason that we, that we did that. Looking through the, clicking through the slides, Jen, we, um, another, another thing that talks about is, I'm told, the mean high water mark of the lakes vary, which also then impacts what you, what you could or couldn't do depending upon where the water is when you go out and measure it. And then, so on the one that has West Shore Drive on it, um, next one, um, the, the commission would use the criteria required, as they said, for, for a special permit, and this would be property that's located as of July 1, 2017. So you just start with a date around when you're gonna adopt it. So with that, I would look forward to any comments that the public may have and, um, the commission may have, and come back and answer them afterwards.
Anyone in the public would like to speak, please come forward and you name an address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Creedon. I live at 57 Codge Road, which is a lakeside home. We, my husband and I have spent some good time looking through the regulations, and we agree with the intent of what is being proposed here. And he being a little bit more legal than me also said that all standards that are set should be incorporated into table 410, area and bulk requirements, so that anyone looking at the zoning regulations can readily see them. The first statement, we were kinda questioning why the high water remark was there. Most of us are in a designated flood zone, and so everything would have to be handled through those channels and meet all those requirements for zoning. Also, um, let's see, the second sentence that says that it states elsewhere in the regulations that the front yard of the properties is defined as the lakeside, I read the 127 pages, I can't find it. So if it's there, I would like to know where, and I, I would like that defined. The references that we did find were in 130 and 3.37, when new regulations were set back in November of 2009, when the regulations were passed that the, we could put buildings in our front property, our roadside property, and within 10 feet of the sidelines and within 20 feet of the road, and, or beyond 20 feet of the road. So that was, um, the first attempt, I guess, to allow us to, you know, build things on, on that side of the property line, which, which is fine in and of itself, but my concerns go a little bit further in that when we start talking about the, um, the front yard and calling that the lakeside being the front yard, well, there's also regulations that address the front, such as parking certain vehicles in your front yard that you can't do, that they have to be behind the house. Well, there's many of us that have short driveways as it is, and if, we need to be clear as to whether this also means that the front is now the back and the back is now the front, because I don't want people parking their boats on their front yard. I don't want them parking their tractor trailers or their trailers or their fix-it cars or whatever in the front yards. And I live on the lakeside, so I know how much trouble that is. I have to pay to park my trailer somewhere else because I can't get it into my backyard. But there's also the people on the other side of the street, and everything that happens on our side of the street affects their property values. There's also safety issues. When people are parking, if they're parking these kind of vehicles out in what is the roadside, um, and could be determined by this language to be the rear property, it, it's very dangerous. I have to have my husband come out every morning and back me out of the driveway because of vehicles that, that are there, because we have short driveways, we don't have a long span, and if you're parking even his pickup truck, I have to get around, you know, so things like that. So, so those are, those are my, some of my concerns about the language as it existing or is proposed. Also, for the special permit, is it gonna follow all the rules for special permitting? And some things, I think it says that you won't be able to change and some things you, you can do. Do you need a special permit to further reduce, and it cannot be reduced by the, by the ZBA, it has to go to the special permitting process? Okay. And, oh, the, the, what do they call it? The block? Big, long, almost a mile-long block. There is language elsewhere in the regulations about, um, section, neighborhoods, and I think it said 500 feet on either side. And that would probably, some measure would probably be better than the full thing because the houses are so different. And in my area, they're all close to the road, in other areas, they're way back from the road. So if you're taking all that and averaging out, you, you may not be creating any benefit at all. So some module, some increment should, should be used. I think in the, the one that we saw, it was 500 feet on either side, and I think that's in section 320.2. So, you know, if, on average, it might, it might not help if, if you take that average, it might push people back, not, they may not be able to do anything on their property. The side yards are very narrow, we're probably, you know, 10, 10 or 15 feet off the property line between our houses in, in most areas. And I agree, I'd, I'd like people to be able to approve their houses, put on their porches and decks and, and things like that, but I do not want the front yard to become, the roadside to become the backyard and to become the rear property line, because that just, just allows people to leave things out in the front of their property that no other place they wouldn't. I don't treat my front yard like my backyard. And, you know, I want when people drive by my house, they go, that's a pretty house. I don't want them seeing junk vehicles or things like that sitting out there. And I think that's all I had to say, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Roger?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I appreciate the fact that they're supportive of the intent. I'm a little confused about the, what's the front and what's the rear yard, and maybe Rick can, you know, can speak to this, or even Commissioner Higley, I know, who's dealt with it, but, I mean, most of the garages, a lot of the garages are in the, are in the roadside now.
They are, yeah.
So they wouldn't be, I mean, that's not treated as the front yard. I don't think that, so if we say that, that, that's considered the front yard for purposes of garages and driveways, then.
Well, the one side of the street would be the front yard if it faces the lake. The other side of the street.
Right, but I don't think that would allow you to park a tractor trailer truck on the lakeside.
Or a residential anyhow.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you couldn't park behind there.
You couldn't get on.
So I'm, as far as the distance, I'm not sure that 500 feet is it. I mean, I, I understand that maybe, you know, maybe we would, we, we could consider some smaller amount, but I'm not sure it becomes sort of like, well, how far do you go in each direction? And, you know, sometimes if you add one or two houses, then you're, you know, you skew the whole thing. So I'm not sure, um, I mean, we could go out there and look at it and study it if that's what you like and consider it. I mean, um, there's, you know.
In cases where I could use a radius.
Well, I mean, she was, the woman was suggesting 500 feet. I don't know, you know, what it, what that would do. I guess what we'd have to do is like, pick a few houses at random and say, 500 feet on either side, what would you get? I think the reason for the block face, unless we could try to figure out how to divide a long street into several block faces and say, from here to there, this is one section of the street, and from here to there is another section of the street and so forth, I, you know, perhaps we could do that. So, I mean, it's really how comfortable the commission is. I'm not sure that any of the things that, um, they're concerned about would, would take place, but then again, um, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we've gotta have further conversation or dialogue. I mean, certainly, this is, uh, something we're trying to move forward and, you know, if we get public comment that, you know, they would like us to look at other alternatives, that's fine.
Roger, I'm just wondering, would a block face, are, I'm, I'm not sure how many side streets are coming in, you know, along that, that area?
The whole street, yeah.
Oh, there's only.
No, and in, in some instances, it's just one long street, and so the, that's why the suggestion was to reduce it to 500 feet, so if somebody wanted to, um, somebody wanted, wanted us to reduce the, uh, the side yard, for example, they would look at anybody within 500 feet of, uh, of the property in each, I would assume in each direction. So that would be, what, a thousand feet then, what we would be looking at?
Yeah.
So, um.
It's not gonna fit the whole thing because the, what, the Easterly Street on, on the Shaker Pines is one long street.
Right.
There's no entrances, nothing, it just.
Right.
It cuts through to Crescent in the back.
Yeah.
Fire road.
Uh, the other street, the one on the west, is, you do have some small, I was gonna say alleyways, but there's not really, they don't go down to Taylor Road. So you've got some streets in there, so you don't really.
Yeah, I mean, the thing on zoning is usually you try to go from a, an intersection or a river or, you know, some natural topography, cause I mean, how do you, I mean, we can go out and look at it and see if there's, you know, ways that you could divide that long road into sections.
Yeah, but the other side doesn't go to a long road, so how do you cover the lake?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm saying that it, it causes, I mean, I'm not really sure, um, I mean, until we actually get an application under this thing and then try to figure it out, you wouldn't know what you were, what you were looking at. So, um, I mean, the, I guess the choice is either we can, you know, we can try this, see what it, see what it produces. Nothing says you have to grant anything. And then on the alternative, as we go along, like, we can see if there's a way that we might want to break, break up the, the long streets into segments, but we would have to develop some criteria, and we probably have to come in here some night and have a workshop and say, this is what it looks like from here to there and so forth.
Are we better off with this than not to, to?
Well, I mean, I'm, I think this is at least a, a start in terms of, um, providing, providing a mechanism to, to even consider an application. I mean, right now, you really don't have any, and as far as, um, if you're not, if you're not going outside your boundary of where you, the zone, current zoning envelope, you, you can do what you always could've do. So, I mean, if you're tearing down a deck and replacing it within the existing envelope, you can do that. So it doesn't really, it doesn't really hurt anybody. Rick, I mean, oh, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, if you look at this, uh, this slide, the one to the left, that house, we've reviewed the, uh, applications, building applications for that seven times because of the side yard setbacks and the close proximity with the other property lines. And the applicant through the building department has, at the. And the applicant through the building department has had to submit seven just because of the side yard setbacks and redesigned the house, the deck. And this is basically how it still stands today. So, it just goes to show the type of issues and problems that you can run into out with those small lots. So, just as a point of view.
I have a quick question. What, when you are referring to the front yard of the properties as defined as the lakeside elsewhere in the regulations, can you show, tell us where that is in our regulations that says that it's defined that way?
Well, Rick and I had a conversation about that after that was raised. And it, we have read that in approvals from the, from the commission in the past.
It's always been considered...
And that has been, so, it must be like an interpretation that the commission has made because the woman, the applicant, the commentary is correct. We couldn't find it ourselves.
Can't find it either.
But that's why when we wrote this, we said it's defined elsewhere and thinking we would find it.
Roger, it would any lake, it's always...
But we have read it and the previous decisions of the commission. And so, like, when you're interpreting regulations, I mean, what we have is, what's the regulation? And then we have, for example, you go to the thing about a drive-through restaurant. You won't find anywhere in the regulations that says that a restaurant can have a drive-through. And yet, this commission approves them all the time because at one point or another, you determined that they could be done by special permit. And so, when the commission is administering the regulations, you have what's actually in the regulations, and then you have your interpretation. So, we're just bringing, you know, we brought it forth because that was our understanding that it's always been that way.
Why?
Because you don't take...
And that's how you got the garages along the street.
The, one of the reasons that they did, you're right, I couldn't find it quickly, but I will find it and send you the page number when I get home. But the residents on the lakeside of one of the lakes, I'm not sure, I don't remember which one, were having issues with, they wanted to put up garages or put a small addition on. And they couldn't because the regulations say that you have to have a garage either attached to your house or in the rear yard. And the rear yard, before they changed it on the lakeside, was the lake. And the challenge that they had was all the houses on the lakeside, most of them, majority of them are built close to the lake so that people can look out and enjoy it. But, you know, that's where the problem came in. So, I think it was when Jose Guiner was the planner, they did a couple workshops, and then they decided that only lakeside would be, what everybody else considers as their backyard would be their front yard, and the rear yard would be the front yard. In other words, they said that because it was smaller between the house and the lake, they would give the frontage to that portion of the lot. And from the house to the street would now be considered the rear yard so that they could put detached garages, sheds, and they wouldn't have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals wouldn't have to look for a hardship to give it to them. So, that has worked out fairly well in the years. But if I'm remembering correctly, that's why planning and zoning gave them the frontage.
Right. So, you're just verifying that this commission has interpreted its regulations to say that that, that the, so, so, all this regulation does is say that if somebody wants to reduce one of the setback requirements, they have the opportunity to apply to this commission, and you will consider the average setbacks that exist on their street in considering whether it meets health warrant for public safety. If they don't want to reduce their setbacks at all, it affects them not at all. So, it's a, it provides a tool for somebody who's trying to find a way to modernize and update an existing building on the lake. I'm hearing what the concerns are, and will certainly, will study them. But at this point, I don't think there's any harm in moving this forward.
I agree, and especially because it's a special use permit. So, the neighbors can come in and voice their concerns. There's more tools for the commission to set standards than for a site plan review. So, that's why I'm happy it's a special use permit. And I agree with you, it's better than what's there now.
Roger? Yes, come forward, just your name and address, just your name and address again because it's being taped.
Lorraine Craden, 57 Cottage Road. I'm, I, my concern, just so you, I wasn't so concerned about the setback in the buildings. That's, that is, it's a concern in that people should be able to take advantage of it, and we need to kind of limit the area that we're using to determine that. So, that was, that was fine. But what I also, the other concern, which I didn't hear it really responded to, is that if we're calling the street side the rear yard, there are other zoning regulations besides just building that are incorporated into that, which means that people can store vehicles, boats, and tractor-trailers, only because I have a neighbor who has one. That really is, that doesn't happen. But big boats, little boats, boats on trailers, they can store those things in their, in the street side, and it's a hazard. And it's also detrimental to other people's property values that aren't just lakeside. You know, they're on the other side of the lake, and they're being affected by everything that happens on our side. So, I was hoping that maybe there's a distinction between those zoning regulations and this zoning for building purposes. I'm all okay with people putting up their garages and their sheds and beautifying their property. But at the same time, if you're calling, making that our rear lot according to the other regulations, then they can have other, they can have one unregistered motor vehicle on that property. They could have something destroying and falling apart on that piece of property, too. So, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear that that was a concern of mine. So, thank you.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think the biggest issue you have up there is hoop houses, you know, that are used as garages that are, that are put up. You know, hoop houses are temporary structures that are supposed to be up for six months or less, and they become permanent structures. And the reason that some of them are up there is because you can't build a garage under the current regulations. So, as far as the storage goes, I hear you on that. And we are currently writing a definition of storage and serval of it, and perhaps we could take that issue up as part of that. I think that's a, you know, that's a point that, you know, we could, we could take care of.
Roger, I just wanted to mention two things that came to mind. The first is, this front yard has been in effect for at least 10 years. And if it hasn't been a problem so far, it shouldn't be. But the more important of the two is, I understand it's a flood zone, but it's also overseen by the state inland wetlands commission, of which the town is part of. And if anybody parks anything in what you, what's considered a rear yard on a lake, they run the risk of getting fined quite a bit of money for any pollution that they do. And also, if I'm not mistaken, the Lake Association has regulations and rules of their own.
Their own, yeah.
And perhaps that would be another tool in the tool belt of the owners to go to the meeting and say, "We want to make sure that no one starts doing this or this or this." And then you can change your bylaws to cover that.
Well, I'm on the board of the Lake Association, so I will keep that in mind. But I, I just, I do feel like there's, there's just a dual thing going on here. And it's not just, it's not just about the buildings. And I have no objection to even the hoop buildings. What I have objections to is that people, that those other types of regulations, that how do we enforce them? Because we don't have, we don't have, the association is, you know, this loose little tax district, we have no enforcement. So, but it certainly is a place for me to look. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I think one of the things that came to mind with this discussion is, for example, I believe we have a regulation that says motorhomes parked on the, on a yard should be parked behind the front line of the residence. So...
You can't do it up there.
Raises a question at the lake.
And you can always make a regulation more restrictive. And if you want to add a sentence in these regulations that says you can't park motor vehicles, you know, recreational vehicles in the, in the property between the building and the street, then you could do that, and that would take care of that issue.
Then you have no place to park.
Yeah, but then she was discussing Roger between the house and the lake.
Yeah, I know. You can't, you wouldn't be able to do that.
No, no, I understand that.
But I mean, she was also saying, I thought, I also heard her saying that if that's your rear yard, but however, the regulation says you can, that has to, it could be parked behind the, behind the front line of the house. And so, that's that way, towards the lake, which you couldn't put them.
No, no.
And you couldn't put them in them.
Nope. If the front yard is between the house and the lake, they have to park it behind the front line of the house, which is street side, you know, in other words...
I believe, if I remember, he's right, we went all through this because Campbell was the chairman.
Here's the lake, here's the house, right? You have to park it this way, not that way.
Mr. Chair, I think the quandary is that we really have two front yards, and we're never going to please everybody. And I think that what we have to recognize is that, right now, all the properties are non-conforming. By passing this regulation, we actually create a zone where all the properties are conforming. And it also allows people to do something with their yard, otherwise, they can't do anything. So, it's one of those kind of things where we're never going to solve this, or we can talk front and back, and front and back as many times as we want. But the real quandary is that we want to allow some enhancements to occur without going through the planning, you know, board of appeals. So, in that sense, something is better than nothing, and we're making it all conforming, rather than all being non-conforming. So, you know, I think we're sort of chasing our tail, but, you know, what we should do is just step back and sort of say, you know, let's look at this logically. And, you know, the thing is, you have to, you know, and again, we do have other regulations that will kick in when somebody has abandoned vehicles and, you know, things that aren't supposed to be in local areas or residential areas. And that should kick in to sort of resolve some of these issues. And hopefully, people would want to be a good neighbor to begin with. So, you know, they don't do that. You know, I can't guarantee that everybody's going to be a good neighbor, but, you know, you would at least hope that good neighbors, like, you know, will do things, you know, that will create a good neighborhood. And, you know, and we're never going to solve it, so I think, you know, we need to move on.
A site plan review will also have more choice to treat each lot as a separate, when they come in. Each individual lot is an individual thing, so...
The other issue, too, is a lot of lake properties were built when the zoning said you could have a 50 by 100 lot. So, as far as side clearance, you probably aren't going to get anything between the houses and the fences anyways. You couldn't drive a boat back there if you wanted.
No.
You know, in a lot of those lots. So, if you're going to take an average, now you've got a whole different measurement.
Anything further, Roger? I don't think we're...
No, I, I think that, I agree with Commissioner Suezak. I think this is, provides a tool, makes the whole lake district conforming. And any of the other issues that were raised, we certainly have vehicles to address them. No pun intended.
Well, but each side of the lake is also different on both lakes.
Right.
It's entirely, each animal, it's a separate animal on both sides. And I think by having the site plan review, we treat each application as an individual thing. Okay, anything further from the public? Okay, hearing none. I'll close XZA 1703.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept XZA 1703, proposed lake district regulations. Whereas the infield planning and zoning commission has initiated a zoning text amendment application to add Section 4.80 entitled "Special Provisions Related to the Lake Overlay District" to the zoning regulations. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was sent to the capital region council of governments for comment. And whereas the capital region council of government found the proposed zoning text amendments will have no adverse impact on surrounding communities. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was circulated to the surrounding communities for comment, and no comments were received. And whereas the proposed amendment was advertised on two occasions in the general inquiry. Whereas, a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is considered, consistent with the overall goals of the infield zoning regulations in a plan of conservation and development, now therefore be it resolved that the infield planning zoning commission hereby approves XZA number 1703 for a zoning text amendment to add Section 4.80 entitled "Special Provisions Related to the Lake Overlay District to the Zoning Regulations" with effective date of September 8, 2017, 15 days after the approval.
Second?
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Again, as Rich stated, we aren't going to solve all the problems, but this gives us a start on some of the problems have had much difficulty over the years when applications have come in, trying to solve individual problems. Some we've been able to, some have had difficulty doing. This is a start in the right direction. We'll see how it goes. If we have to amend it, then we'll have to, we'll look at it that time. Anyone else, if I said, all in favor? Opposed? One? Motion passes. Two, five in favor, one against, and no abstentions. Okay, XZA 1704, mixed-use business residential, I'm sorry.
1705.
XZ 1705, did I get the numbers?
XZA 1705, proposed mobile food vendors regulations, planning and zoning commission applicant. Charles Durin?
Here.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Mary Scott?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Nick LaFicus?
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Where are we doing, 04?
04 is next, if you notice.
Oh, listen.
On the agenda, that's why I jumped to 05.
All right. I'm stacked here.
Well, I called 04 first, but it's 05 on the agenda.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is a proposal that, as I know, the town council, after a long process of studying the situation, approved a mobile vendor, food vendors regulation for streets and public property. And the planning and zoning commission was asked to follow through after that approval and to approve, or to consider an adopt regulations where mobile food vendors could be located on private property in terms of providing a more vital community. We started with the notion, you want to move me up one? We started with the notion of, like, what is it we're not trying to regulate? So, we started with, if you have... So, we started with, if you're having a family one-day gathering at your property, not to exceed four times a year, and that's kind of like we did with tag sales and things of that kind, we said, no more, four times a year. So, you know, a lot of people like to have a gathering, they have the pizza truck come over, it's in the backyard, it's for their family and friends, it might be a special occasion. You don't need a, you would not need a permit for that. This would not involve special events sponsored by the town and located on town property. It would involve food vending on public streets, such as regulated by the Town Council Ordinance 5835 and its implementing rules. It also would not involve, such as Mass Mutual has Employee Appreciation Day events, and they bring in food vendors, trucks for their own property. So, if you had food trucks serving private employees, when restricted to the employees of the building and the industrial complex. So, we're not talking about the canteen truck as well, that shows up and serves coffee, and whatever else you'd like to partake. And we would not be talking about mobile food trucks that would be approved as part of a special events permit issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, for example, the Mud Run, that's now become sort of an annual event, and has, and this commission has approved how it's set up and so forth, has gone through EMS, and the police and fire, and everything, everybody else. So, if food trucks were part of that approval after public hearing, then those are special events that only take place on a limited number of days of the year. So, that's what it doesn't, doesn't apply to. Also, you want to go to the, yeah, also, if you are doing a one-day vending from a specific location with the written permission of the private property owner. So, again, limited to four times a year. There may be all kinds of reasons why somebody would want to have a food truck at a particular location for a one-day event. And if you were having it for more than one day, but less than one week, from a specific location, then you may apply for a zoning permit. And that's basically coming in, filling out a permit in the zoning office. And provided that you have a license from the Health District, and you meet all the other requirements as specified in the town ordinance, we would review it for the types of things that are in there, like visibility, traffic impact, so forth. More than one week vending from a specific location, I'm not sure what that's referring to. I guess we've got to go to the text. This was just, specific text on that?
Yes, it says vending is proposed more than one week requires an approval from Planning and Zoning Commission concerned with the special event standards.
Right, so we just input it on the slide. That would require coming before this commission, if you're going to be there for more than one week. So, all food vending, going to the next slide, would be restricted to daylight hours, beginning no earlier than 7:00 a.m. and no later than 8:00 p.m. So, what it says is you can't vend if the sun hasn't come up or the sun has gone down. And you can't be located within a half mile of a brick-and-mortar food establishment unless given written permission by the brick-and-mortar establishment, and would have to be filed with the planning office. Again, that would not apply if you had a special events permit from this commission. So, if establishment that is anticipating that they would have a special events permit and have food trucks, they, that would be something that the commission would consider when they were granting a special events permit. And then, of course, all food vendors must be licensed by the North Central Health District. I'd like to thank Raquel for her nice little pictures of food vending carts. So, that's basically it. Try to make it as simple as possible. If you're having that backyard truck that comes and cooks you the pizza, and you want to celebrate your birthday, have at it. If you want to be someplace for, you know, a week or more, come see the commission. Anything less than that, you come in and file a zoning permit.
Okay, anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Anyone on the commission, anything?
Mr. Chair, the only thing that I did notice is that, you know, we have, you know, Item D, or at Item C, one-day vending from a specific location. Item D says more than one day, but less than one week vending from a specific location. And Item E says more than one week vending from a specific location. But we never defined if it's exactly one week. So, the only thing that I sort of suggest is maybe we modify Item D that says, you know, less, one week or less vending from a specific location. So, that would include, you know, seven days or less, and then more than seven days. So, that we sort of, you know, just, in case somebody comes and says, well, I'm just going to do it for a week, but you never told me that I couldn't do anything for a week. So, in that sense, you know, we should sort of, you know, define that one day, that one week period. So, if, you know, we could either, you know, modify Item D to say one week or less, or we can modify Item E that says one week or greater or more. And it's up to whoever, you know, whatever the decision we make, it doesn't really matter.
The or less is less confusing, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But I do, I like that addition, definitely.
Okay, anyone else? Shall we take a vote on adding that, or, yeah? Or as amended later? Leave it? Okay. I have one up above on Item C, implementing rules and regulations as it may be amended. I thought, not legal, but I know a lot of places that have that, and if they amend it...
As may be amended from time to time.
Any other suggestions? Any problems with...
I, I...
First line of D.
The first line of D.
So, more than one day, but less than one...
No, it would just say, you know, more than one day, but one week or less.
But one week or less, yes.
But one week or less.
Vending from a specific location, okay. Anybody have a problem with the two suggestions? Okay, so the motion would be as amended then.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept ZXZA...
No.
Nope.
I didn't close the public hearing, 1705. Okay. Now it's closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve XZA 17-05, mobile food vendor regulations. Whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received a zoning text amendment application to add Section 8.100, entitled "Mobile Food Vendors to the Enfield Zoning Regulations." And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been sent to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment. And whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed zoning text amendments will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been circulated to the surrounding communities for comment, and no comments were received. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer. And whereas a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development. Now therefore be it resolved, resolve, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves XZA 17-05 for a zoning text amendment to add Section 8.100, entitled "Mobile Food Vendors to the Enfield Zoning Regulations," with an effective date of September 8, 2017, 15 days after the approval, with the two modifications, Section D, more than one day, but one week or less, and, and C...
No.
Add, what are we adding?
It's up above.
Wait a minute.
As, oh, as may be amended from time to time.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? No abstentions, unanimous. Thank you very much, Rich. Oh, I thought he was leaving, yes.
He's not going anywhere.
He's here for the duration.
1704, Secretary, read the legal notice and take the roll.
XZA 1704, proposed mixed-use business residential regulation, Planning and Zoning Commission applicant. Charles Durin?
Here.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Mary Scott?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Nicholas Lefakis?
Here.
Rich Suzak is here.
Okay, Roger.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you go around the town of Enfield, you'll find many examples of mixed-use, residential and commercial. In the first slide that we have up, is actually, on the right, is a existing residential property within the town. The one on the left was just an example that we pulled off the internet from West Hartford. And I don't want anybody to think that we're proposing that height of building, but it was just an example of what, what could be with respect to, in that building, you have a brokerage firm on the first floor, and you have residential apartments over. Again, it's a shot from West Hartford. Do you want to, we're going to click us through. And here's two more examples from Hazardville of mixed use. Go ahead. And again, on Alden Avenue and on Enfield Street. So, we have many examples, but it's interesting, in looking at the use table, there's, there was no mixed use specified. And so, the plan of conservation and development talks about mixed use, and particularly with respect to the reuse of the mall property. This regulation would allow that you could come in for special permit on, you know, a residential house that you want to convert to residential and commercial, but it would also say that in repurposing the mall, you could contemplate residential above the mall. So, it's one sentence, which is you're adding business residential mixed use to the table of uses by special permit in all business districts. Click to the next one, if we got another one. All right, go back to that. So, it's, it's really, you know, like, we have it all over town, but it isn't in the table of uses.
No, it isn't. I think the only place it's allowed presently is...
Tomtonville.
Tomtonville, Secretary.
Yeah, it's allowed, you currently allow it in Tomtonville.
We finally put that in down there one year, a couple of years past. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against this application.
I should also just say, to make the record complete, that we followed all of the requirements for the...
Let Jen take over.
We followed all of the requirements for the advertising, it was referred, all of the, which is in your resolution.
I thought Rich would lose his voice before you did. Okay.
I'm just going to have to talk.
I will, yep. We shall close 1704, XZA.
I'd like to put forth a motion to approve XZA 17-04, proposed mixed-use business residential regulation. Whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a zoning text amendment to add business residential mixed use to the table of uses as a use allowed by special permit in all business districts. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment. And whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed zoning text amendments will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been circulated to the surrounding communities for comment, and no comments were received. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer. And whereas a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves XZA 17-04 to add business residential mixed use to the table of uses as a use allowed by special permit in all business districts, with an effective date of September 8, 2017, 15 days after the approval.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Again, this is what we've discussed for a while, and moving it into other sections of the town, but especially, it gives some options to the mall and other businesses where people may wish to do this, residential and business. We've had it in the past, generations used to do it. Did you go through Hazardville, you'd see that. And it just allows this to happen again, where we, perhaps, wiser use of our properties or land. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, no abstentions. Okay, next is 17, XZA 1707. Secretary, read the roll, or take the, read the legal and take the roll.
XZA 1707, proposed tenant identification signs regulations, Planning and Zoning Commission applicant. Charles Durin?
Here.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Mary Scott?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Nicholas Lefakis?
Here.
Rich Suzak is here.
Okay, Roger, you got your voice?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the, this has been discussed a lot, and we've had, actually have an application that's, you know, table tonight until September 7, that originated from the owners of the Kimco Plaza. When originally, they originally came in, they were looking for a regulation that would be more tailored so that it would fit similar situated properties as theirs. And what the commission has done in workshops, I think we've had two workshops with the commission... Commission on this, is to consider what is allowed in other communities. But as we went out and took pictures that we put in this slide, I mean, from the main road, it really is difficult to know what it is that's down the entrance drive. And so this is, this starts with Kohl's. And we know that Kohl's is there, we know that McDonald's is there, and we know that the Dunkin' Donuts is in the front. We really don't know what's down beyond there. And we'll pass without comment about the design of the Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you.
The, the next one. Then you got on the other side, going into that same plaza, you have a Burger King sign and you have a sign that says that Leslie's Pools is, you get to out behind the Burger King. And you have two fairly good sized office buildings with medical facilities down there on the side with no sign out at the main road at all. It's not until you get down behind the Burger King, there's a little monument sign that says, you know, Doctor so-and-so is here and so forth. So the signage, even for somebody to find their doctor in this whole plaza is a little Next. So this is Enfield Square Mall from the Elm Street side. And we would have to know what was, what was there to know what was down there. Then we have the Elm Street sign, and again, it doesn't really say what's there at all. Next. Then we have the Hazard Avenue side, and we still don't know what's there. So we have like a bunch of signs, all of which say Enfield Square Mall, or actually, they say Enfield Square, but we don't know what's there. Then there's State Line Plaza, which is, and here's the entrance to that, which is at Freshwater Boulevard and the middle entrance of the Enfield Square. And you don't know what's there unless you can see down beyond the trees. So as far as distraction to the driver, I think it's more distraction to try to peer down there and say, is this where Michael's is or not? Or is it in the other plaza? And then the next one is the State Line Plaza, and Rick took many of these pictures. Some are fuzzy than others because I understand he took them out of the windshield. So we just have a little good human nature, you know, I mean, we gave you the plaque earlier, Rick, I mean.
You didn't want to jump out of the car.
He said the reason he took them out of the window is because, you know, you can't actually go out and stand in the middle of the street and take the. So then we go to the south entrance on State Line. And again, there's more than a liquor store down there.
There is.
And so this one here in Brookside Plaza, the middle entrance, is, basically it says Brookside Plaza out at the street, but if you're going by, you only know that there's Michael's down there. Then there's Enfield Commons, and you had, you had no idea what's in Enfield Commons. And then there's another entrance, another sign on Freshwater Boulevard for Enfield Commons. Then we go to Brookside Plaza. And Brookside Plaza, if you're going by, you know Bob's is in there, if you can peer down as you're going by. Outside of that, you don't know. Then there's Brookside Plaza, which was named the DeAngelo Entrance Exit, but other than DeAngelo's out on the main street, you don't know where you're going. Then there's Brookside Plaza with Petco, and you're really not sure you're going into a shopping center there at all. Then on Brookside Plaza, the view from Enfield Commons, just looking across. And some of these signs, because of the large mature trees, you can't even, you can't even see the sign from driving along the street. So I think some of it, you know, may be that the maturity of the trees that are there now from when these plazas were built.
That's what's happened, yeah.
You know, they may need to be pruned a little bit. Anyhow, the Commission and workshop had a lot of conversations about entrances, so we tried to figure out for you how many entrances and exits are, there are. And we just took the major, you know, the major shopping plazas. There are two entrances on Phoenix, seven on Hazard, six on Freshwater Boulevard, four on Elm Street, and two on Paloma. So there's a lot of ways to get in and out of these shopping areas, but you have to know where you're going. So the goal was to try to, and this is, I think in the time I've been here, I've heard from the owners of, all but Big Y. And Big Y has no sign at all. And I've heard from all of them asking for identification signs. In addition to Kimco, I mean Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, Brookside Plaza, they've all asked for some identification signs. So what, what your regulations do is, basically your sign regulations were created in the year in which you determined the amount of street frontage you had on the main street and to say what the size of the sign was. And if you have a shopping plaza with a lot of pads out on the main street, they only have like a driveway or an entrance in some instances, then they don't get much of a street sign at all. And so what we're suggesting is that the Commission could allow by special permit tenant identification signs, and they would be linked to the numbers of entrances and exits you have, the number of different places that are there that people know, need to know how to get to, and that you could take into account that they're in keeping with the, with the street, the street presence. So we're not saying that everybody gets X amount of signage. We're saying the signage has to be in keeping with the overall character of the streets. So we're not looking to create, you know, a lot of competing signs, all this, you know, along there, but we're, and it's sort of from a standpoint of retail is where, you know, they would like to be able to attract their customers. I mean, you saw it a little bit when Aldi's came in here recently, and they were trying to figure out how to put up a sign that would allow people to know that they were there. I mean, I think that was a very good example of the tenants within the shopping centers that folks don't, don't know there. And one of the rich things about Enfield is, I know the media wants to keep saying the mall, the mall, the mall is dying. There is like twice as much, there was always twice as much retail surrounding the mall than there was in the mall. And it's just that a lot of it from, from a street presence, you don't know it's there. But it's there and it's vibrant and it's doing well and they're looking to expand. And so that's what we're trying to do is to, within, keeping within an overall design theme, keeping within confines of, of good, good street design, allow the larger shopping plazas in the town to have tenant identification signs. And it, again, it would be by special, by coming to the Commission as a type C sign. So you, and you would have criteria to review it against. So it's not like you can apply at the zoning office and automatically get a substantial sign, and then everybody says, where did that come from? So I hope that I've made that as understandable as I could. It's less, it's, is not as permissive as the pending Kimco amendment, which would basically say that they got a certain size sign and they could come and apply to the zoning office.
I was comparing both the Kimco paperwork that we were given a while ago and what we had done at the workshop, and I think I talked to you at the workshop about, I had a concern about the height. I like that it's a type C sign because it comes to the Commission, but Kimco has not more than two freestanding tenant identification signs. And this one says for one or more, but there's no maximum amount. So in theory, you know, you could have like nine freestanding signs. I'm not saying you would. And also, this one has 240 square feet of signage per side, and Kimco has 230 square feet of signage per side. And the height is, this, the town's has 40 feet and Kimco's has 35 feet. And I feel more comfortable with, as anybody who knows me knows, I like to take baby steps to get to where we're going. So I'd prefer the lesser of the two. And that's just my own personal opinion, but I just don't feel comfortable.
Well, with respect to the one or more versus two, if you look at that chart, then Kohl's has two, two entrances, so they ask for two signs. But if you look at Brookside Plaza, they got five entrances. And the Commission may decide that they got a tenant identification sign at three of them.
Right.
So that's a, you know, that, that's the reason why that we said one or more because it depends upon how many. And if you look at State Line Plaza, they have four entrances, and Big Y has three. So we were trying to not, we were trying to go, I'm just giving you the thought behind it, I mean, it's your discretion, but we were trying to say that we really need to look at the plaza as a whole. And I think the chairman has said several times is maybe, you know, maybe depending on the closeness of the entrance to a particular tenant, that's where that tenant sign goes.
But my concern is I've seen aggressive businesses. And I didn't see anything, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything that ties, you know, like five entrances, five signs, or so many footage or so many acres, you have a maximum. And, and I understand that we can't cover everything, but I'm just making my feelings known, and I especially have concern about the height and the size of the signs. I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah, well, the height, again, the height is a maximum, but it, as like in the Kimco proposal, the height is they automatically get it. In this proposal, they.
No. It says not to exceed more than 230 square feet of signage per side.
Yeah, that's, that's how big the, the placard is. You were talking about how tall it is.
Right, but yours says 240, the town says 240.
Yeah, but it says not to exceed 240, and you can determine less.
But it's kind of hard if it says you could have up to 240.
Well, it says up to 240, but, but if you've already given them 240 on two entrances, you may give them less on a third or fourth.
Well, I have concerns, and especially my last concern is the 35 feet. I know it's only five feet difference, but right now, if I'm not mistaken, most of the signs freestanding can only be, they're either tied to the frontage, how far back you are, or no higher than 12 feet. And to go from like 12 feet to 40 feet is a big jump.
What's mobility, I don't know if it exists, but the readability as you travel, if you've got to look up, I, I think height would have a lot to do with safety.
Right, well, there's, there's two things that, with respect to the height, and we went, we went and looked at the existing height. I mean, Kohl's existing sign is, is fairly high.
Yeah, but that's for the highway. When I went through there, they allowed them in the same square.
But I mean, that's, when you, when you're, the regulation says you take into account the location and the street scape and so forth, then that, this regulation basically allows you to say, well, you need it five feet higher to see it from the, from the highway.
Yeah.
With respect to, if you want to reduce the overall size, then that, when we drafted it, if you reduced it a little bit, you're still within your advertised whatever. So that's certainly within your purview if you want to reduce, reduce the height of the overall size. Again, it's not a permissible, it's up to, and so it's really how you want to go with it.
It's our discretion, you know, basically, in essence, what you're saying is we can go up to those, to those things. We don't have to automatically give that.
We don't have to go there. It depends upon the street scape, the street scape and the whole, and the height of the buildings that surround it.
Well, that's a question too.
So for, yeah, so for example, if you've got a four-story hotel or something that's going to block it or whatever, you would take into account those things.
Even like right now, the Brookside Plaza sign that just says Brookside Plaza, to read it as you drive along the car, it's sort of high to see, but.
I'm just one member, but I'm saying that I don't feel comfortable, and I will be voting against it.
You've got to think of readability going along the road.
Well, I think the readability issue that you're talking about, the reason when you have a sign that's larger like that, that goes a little higher, it, you can read the sign further back because when you're coming up, you don't want to be taking the turn right then because you read it right there. You're going to see it as you're coming down the road and going to say, okay, that's the entrance I need to go into.
As long as there's no trees in front of you.
Well, exactly, and I think those are things we have to take into consideration when we take a look at what we allow.
That's true.
Also, if you consider the Mass Mutual sign, the Holiday Inn sign, and the Holiday Inn sign along I-91, those are higher than 35 feet.
Their grandfather did.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, saying you have, you have existing signs in the town that are higher than, than what's being proposed.
Yeah, no, it's, but that's, those are maxims.
Right, and this is a maximum as well, and you don't, and it says up to, and it also says that you, you have criteria, and your criteria is the street scape that you're dealing with, the height of, which includes the height of the buildings, the setback, the, the street that it's on, the speed of the traffic that it's, that that street is on, and the appropriateness of putting a sign. And so I would imagine that if somebody wants to put a identification sign in here, they're going to have to give us a rendering of, you know, you, you take the sign and you superimpose it on a, on a photometric of the street, and you'll see what that sign will look like when you have it in front of you.
There you go. That's, that's what he just said is interesting, to do a photometric and put it on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's very easy to take, to take the street scape, take the sign and put it, plot it there. It's like when you, when you look at, you're considering applications for cell towers, and you want to say, where, where can you see the cell tower from? And so you're going to, you're going to have Kimco say, look, if you want a sign there, and this is what you're asking for, and then you look at it and you say, whoa, no, I'm not sure that I want that, you know? Got to cut it down a little bit, a little smaller, got to move back because it might interfere with. Got to move back because it might interfere with line of sight. So, you know, we have the tools today to evaluate these things that we didn't have 25 years ago.
That would make a difference.
I'd be more concerned about how many words are on a sign.
Well, that's it.
If they, if they put a book on there, nobody's going to be able to read it.
Right.
You need fewer words, bigger.
Right. You can't, the sign regulation industry won some court cases recently where you cannot control what's, what's written on the sign. You can only control the height and size and with the location. But if they want to, you know, what they actually put on that sign is protected by free speech.
Yeah, we, that was a...
So in your, yeah, in your, in your looking and reviewing it, and reviewing it as a special permit, you can, you know, you can take into account readability, but as far as what it actually says, like, you can't restrict that they can only put up...
No, but what I'm saying is if you've got 27 stores on...
Right, you're not going to have, you're not going to have 20, you're not going to have 27 stores.
I know, but whatever they got on there.
Right. And so, again, it's like, it's, it's very difficult to write a regulation that, you know, and that's, I think that's where we are on these sign regulations, is you write it such that, you know, you can have, you know, 12.2 square feet on the front and 3.2 on the side and, you know, we deal with this every day. And then, you know, you only have so much signage on a building and you have seven different tenants in there. Each tenant comes in, wants, you know, changes a sign, they want a little bigger sign, and then you have to calculate, well, how much is already up there on the building? So the signage is, and we've got to figure out a way to do it that makes a little bit more sense so that it provides, you know, it provides the retail marketplace what they need so that customers can find them, but also maintains the ambiance of the community that you want to protect. And that's what I think we have here. Like everything, you don't, it's a special permit, you have to decide that it meets your criteria.
I think that's what we have to do.
My only concern with that, and you make valid points, and I'm sure you're correct, is sometimes we get labeled as being not business friendly. So if a store conglomerate comes in and they show 40 feet and they show the maximum signage size, you know, we, we can say, well, we want it smaller, but then you have to have reasons.
Well, if we have that overlay, I think...
But, but they can't, they can't do it 42 feet. So if you did it 35 feet, then they couldn't do it 37 or 40. I'm just saying that, I'm not trying to be, it needs to be changed, but I'm going to be against it because I think it's too big a change. Even the person that wanted the change, the company that wanted the change, didn't do it as large as we, as the town did.
Because Roger, do we differentiate between the tenant identification signs and the plaza identification signs?
That would be included in this.
I think the plaza sign would be rolled into the tenant identification. We wouldn't have two signs, one that says Brookside Plaza and then a whole separate other sign. I think you would have Brookside Plaza and then have that. And that's, that's what we were anticipating.
Because I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, we mentioned the fact that, you know, the, the hotel and, and, you know, I guess Mass Mutual has, you know, identification signs that are not necessarily next to an entrance.
Right.
And that, you know, basically, these tenant identification signs are really to alert drivers, you know, adjacent to, you know, an entrance or an exit to a plaza. So that if we can sort of differentiate between, you know, a tenant identification sign, which would be, which getting to Virginia's point is, is that we would, you know, sort of, we can add the fact that, you know, these identification signs have to be adjacent to an entrance or an exit. But then, you know, if, if somebody is in the middle of a block and they have a certain, you know, amount of, you know, retail that, that, you know, that you can see off the highway, let's say, and it's like similar to, you know, the hotel and Mass Mutual, that, you know, they would have a, a different kind of sign because of the fact that, you know, it might have to be a little larger. So, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if, if all of a sudden we're limiting, you know, somebody's sign locations and identifications and, you know, the location of them, if we start, you know, if, if they're, they're lumped into the same group, then, then if it's not adjacent to an entrance or an exit, you couldn't put it, you know, adjacent to the highway. And, you know, I'm wondering, you know, are we starting to sort of, you know, maybe getting too specific as to what we're trying to achieve? And, and obviously, this says tenant identification sign, so, you know, that's different than the plaza identification sign, which is why I asked the question, you know, do we have something there that sort of would allow somebody to put something not necessarily next to an entrance?
Put your verbiage there that says plaza and identification sign.
So Commissioner, are you suggesting that, that you would be okay with a tenant identification sign like midway in a plaza, not at an entrance?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, is that, no, we would, we would not want it to be midway through a plaza, you know, that it would have to be at an entrance or an exit.
Right.
But then, you know, if, if somebody wants to advertise to the highway that, hey, we're located here, you know, that would be...
You have a separate section that allows highway signs and that's, that's how you got the Holiday Inn and...
All right. And, and, okay, so, so I mean, if we do have that separate section, then, then, you know, we can specifically start honing this down maybe a little more so that it's not in the middle of, you know, two entrances so that, you know, you're, you're sort of identifying, you, if you go into this entrance, you're going to go to these stores, if you go into this entrance, you're going to go to those stores.
Roger, would you put up the Brookside Plaza sign there? Because I think they're, really, they're all set to do the signage under that. Right there, that's all they have is a Brookside Plaza. I don't know the elevation of that. What, that's not 40 feet, I don't believe.
Rick tells me that sign's 20 feet.
20 feet to the peak?
20 feet is maximum. I'm pretty sure that that's what they came in.
So, I mean, that, there, right under the sign, Brookside Plaza, you'd be able to put your slats for the other speed, the other, the other houses. So they're all set, really, they've got the name of the plaza. I, I think if we word it so that the plaza name or the mall name or whatever else they want to call themselves is part of the signage.
That particular sign, you can't read going up and down the avenue because of the trees.
Right. Right, but I'm...
And if you allow a little bit, so you, you, you either got to tell them, they either got to be, give them permission to prune those trees or replace them with smaller ones, or you got to allow them to put the sign up a little bit higher.
Roger, we asked, they asked already to prune them and we said no, but I, I think that's up to the commission present anyway, so, but probably...
If you don't want, if, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to provide both sides of the argument because I hear it from them every day. But if, if they can't prune the trees, then if they're allowed to go a little higher...
That's something that, that we'd have to decide at the time, whether we let them go up or prune the trees.
If you let them go up the, and you don't let them prune the trees, the trees are going to join.
We're not going to let them go up to the height of the sky, but I mean...
No, no, I'm saying that if it's 20 feet now and the trees...
I think we have to take a look at our planning schedule and not, not put a tree. I mean, we, we...
I mean, you, you really want to have low-growing trees around signs, entrance signs.
Yeah, we got to adjust our things, our, our zoning regulations from time to time. We've learned that.
So I mean, with respect to that, I mean, they could put mature specimen trees back further.
Maybe it's time, right.
So, I mean, there are alternatives to that, but I'm just saying at the present time, they, all they have is a sign that says Brookside Plaza, doesn't tell you what's there and you can't see it.
No, that's all I wanted to use it for because they're really all set, that type of sign is where you drop your other locations.
Yeah, but I think if you compared that, the height of that sign to the existing Kohl's sign, the Kohl's sign is higher.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so, I mean, and if you...
That sign, that sign doesn't need to be read by the highway, Kohl's sign did.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, that's why I say that you'd set a, you'd set an upper maximum and it could be lower than what's in the draft.
Oh, I understand that.
But you, but you, you, you decide based upon where it's located and the street scape and the height of the buildings.
Right, that's why it's on a hearing.
The speed of the traffic, I mean, the speed of traffic on every street is not the same. If you're on Cranbrook, you're not going as fast as if you're going on, on, on one of the major streets.
Well, Hazard Avenue, you don't go too fast. Anyway, you've got too many stoplights.
Yeah. But I mean, for me too, looking at that sign, I, I mean, you know, you put a bunch of stuff under me, I couldn't read that. So, you know, but that's just me, you know? Again, I think it's, it's just, I understand the concern with regard to, you know, not wanting it to be too tall and too high, but I think everything has to be taken into consideration when we do it, where the placement of the sign is, you know, what, what we have for maturity of trees, what was, you know, the plan there in the first place to have, all that stuff there. And the speed of the road, 40, I think it's 40 along Hazard Ave. I mean, that's a pretty good clip, especially if you're, you know, you hit all the green lights, so, and that's, that's not always happening, yeah. So, yeah, I think there's definitely the factors there. But I, I guess I understand what Rich is saying about, we don't say, we don't define in here entrances and exits. It doesn't specify that in this. So that question then would be, is that something we need to be specifying to keep it out from between the entrances and exits of a plaza? So that way, they're not sticking a sign in between the two different entrances and exits, so that way they can get away with one sign as high as can be and, you know...
Yes, that's exactly what I was alluding to, and, and I think that it would make it more restrictive because we didn't allude to it before, but, but that's what we're going to try to do so that we can do something that's more restrictive, just not less restrictive.
Yeah, gotcha.
You know, I, I think we can put it under section, let me see, B. Yeah, the owner of the multi-tenant building or multi-building site may apply for one or more freestanding signs adjacent to entrances slash exits of the tenant site, subject to the provisions of the signed provision. So right there, it would flow right in there and, and, and give them a location as to where it's actually going to go.
Most of the entrances though are split, yeah, so...
Well, you've got two entrances.
Yeah, no, but...
Or three or four.
No, but you got, the entrance and the exit are in the same thing.
But, but that, that's one, that's one, you know, that's, yeah. So, so, but, but you can either go in or out, so, but, but it's one entrance/exit location.
Okay.
Which is like, that's why we put an entrance/exit.
Oh, all right, I see what you mean. I mean, right there is the entrance and exit. It's just divided.
You don't want them both using the same lane.
No, no.
Is she at?
No, no. We'll go out there. I know, that's where I get, I get lost. Okay. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this? Anyone in the public would speak in favor or against this? Oh, good. Okay.
But the heck, you sat here long enough, right?
Dennis Lettono.
Oh, I thought I recognized you.
This is Robert Lane. We have the property on 139 Hazard Avenue.
Right.
Like he was saying, the, the entrance is not wide.
So yours is...
The size of the sign is determined by that, and all those doctors back there crying for some kind of signage, so...
That's right, yeah.
But he was saying the square foot eight doesn't, doesn't match the street because the entrance is not wide, you know? You go one way in, one way out, but it's only like, what, 50 feet wide?
Yep.
But way in the back, I don't know if sign could be put in.
Platinum Fitness.
For the back, you know, put less in the front, but be allowed to put a little bit more once they get in.
The Plaza's back there, the MRI is on the left, you've got the old restaurant that's there, the Physical Fitness.
Yeah, we're planning Fitness, yeah.
You've got all that back there.
Aren't the freestanding signs up by the street?
There are some, but not for everybody as a company.
The one that were there first were allowed, you know, they filled up the space, then everybody else didn't have the space that came after.
So Roger, how would you address that? Would you just remove all the signage that's there and go with the new one?
Well, there's not really a sign that I could find until you got inside behind Burger King, there's...
No, this isn't Burger King, this is Hazard Avenue.
It's where the gym is, Roger.
It's right across from the entrance to...
Yeah, there's a bunch of sites.
But I mean, yeah, I mean, you could, I would say take down whatever's there and put up a sign that says Medical Office Building.
Yeah.
In the back, I'm not sure that you want to, you can't put every doctor on it, but I mean, at least that there was something that tells you that the medical office buildings are down this, are down here. And then, you know, they could have within that shopping center parking lot, a tenant, a pylon sign there rather than that little monument sign that they have, which you, you actually have to stop dead in the driveway to read it at the present time. I shouldn't say stop dead because you're headed to the doctor, I know.
Then you don't need to go.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot back there. Anyone else would speak in favor or against?
Rich go.
I'm sorry?
I took that as in favor.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, but he, he's right, there are, that was never really, this had a mismatch out there.
That might not meet the size regulations though, in terms of the 10,000 square feet.
On what?
That's one of our criteria, item D, is that it would have to have at least 10,000 square feet, and I'm not sure that that...
Oh, yeah, yeah. They have enough because they're all kind of like little complexes.
All right, all right.
There's like two or three or four businesses.
Okay, if, if they add up to 10,000, but, but there is a size restriction so that, you know, you couldn't have, you know, a smaller type of, you know, entity.
50 by 100 is only, is already 5,000, so you've got about 10 of those.
Also says an acre and that's more than an acre.
Well, I have to say, you've swayed me and I like what you put in. That was my concern, that you could have too many signs all over the place and then you'd lose what you were trying to accomplish. And I will be changing and voting positively with the caveat that I will immortalize the minutes to this meeting. And the first time somebody says, well, we, you, the regs say 40 feet and you, you think I should only have 20 feet or whatever, I'm going to hold up my little page and go.
Oh, they'll do it, you know they will.
I told you so.
That's right, that's all right. Just have to grin and bear it. Okay, I mean, anything further for anyone? And now, do we have any amendments on this? Does it get lost on what we're saying?
Yes, there is an amendment to item B. We're going to add, you know, the, the fact that these signs can only be located adjacent to an entrance slash exit of the tenant site.
All right, that saves us from getting in the middle of the bushes out on, let's say, this one of having signs in the middle of it. Good. Good catch. Okay, I'll, I'll close 1030.09, I'm sorry, XZA 1707, I'm reading the section number. Okay, someone?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept XZA 1707 freestanding tenant identification signs, parentheses, pylon signs in business and industrial districts, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a zoning text amendment application to add section 10.30.9 entitled Freestanding Tenant Identification Signs, parentheses, pylon signs, and the parentheses in business and industrial districts, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has, has been referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment, and whereas the Capital Region Councils of, Council of Governments found that the proposed zoning text amendments have no adverse impact on surrounding communities, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been circulated to the surrounding communities for comment and no comments were received, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was advertised on two occasions in the General Choir, whereas a public hearing was held on August 24th, 2017... on August 24, 2017, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield zoning regulations and the Plan of Conservation and Development, now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves ZXZA 17-07 to add section 10.30.9 entitled "Freestanding Tenant Identification Signs Slash," or parentheses, Pylon Signs, and the parentheses, "in Business and Industrial Districts," with an effective date of September 8, 2017.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed. It's unanimous. Six, zero, zero. Okay, uh, let's see, get it where we are. XZA 1708, I believe?
XZA 1708, proposed changes to table 10.5, or 5.10, Planning and Zoning Commission applicant, Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Rich Suzak is here.
Okay, Roger.
This, again, is an effort to allow for buildings to be placed closer to the street. Many times, what happens is folks come in, and the first conversation is, "Well, you require me to put the building sixty, or eighty, or a hundred feet back from the street." And then, of course, if the building has to be sixty, or eighty, or a hundred feet back from the street, then well, we'd just like to put our parking there. And again, this is minimum front yard. It's not mandated, so, but it, it's permissive. And, for example, go, just take the CVS again on Hazard and Broadbrook. They, you know, that whole argument, they went to the ZPA, they asked for a variance to put the building up by the street-
Right.
And the ZPA said, "No." This would, if the commission felt that good planning was that the building should be located close to the street, this would say that there's nothing to prevent them from doing that. So, that's the first section on lot and bulk, and so, we would reduce the minimum existing front yards in the BLBG, BP, and BR zones to thirty-five feet. So, we believe thirty-five feet is realistic. It allows for sidewalk, it allows for landscaping, and it allows for the possibility that at some point, they might want to widen the road a little bit. So, table 5.10, the minimum lot area, one of the things we're finding in the business, in the business regional zone is, we, we have, somebody comes in and they have to be, you know, ten acres and four hundred feet of lot frontage, and they got this, this big shopping center, and then all of a sudden, they say, "Oh, well, we'd like to sell off pieces of it." And so, then they create these like lease lot, lease line subdivisions. For example, State Line Plaza, the gentleman comes in and he's showing me the thing, and I'm saying, "Well, it seems to me that TGIF Fridays must be part of your shopping center." And he says, "Oh, no, it's not." And I said, "Well, your sign says State Line Plaza is on TGIF, so either that sign is, shouldn't be there, or you own TGIFs." And so, we research it, and we find out that at some point or another, they came in and created an interesting thing I'd never heard of before, but whatever, always learn something new. They created a subdivision that was not a subdivision. And they, and they split off TGIF Fridays in the middle of the parking lot and said, "This is a separate lot." So, he said, "No, no, 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 no. See this? It said it was a subdivision, but it wasn't a subdivision. It was for every, whatever your financing was for, but it's still part of your lot." And so, you know, and so, and you, this is what we have. And so, you go over to the mall, and you know, like, one of the anchors owns one piece-
Yeah, they do.
But they don't own the other. And what this commission actually approved was one, one big thing. So, in thinking about that, and in thinking about, like, if we're gonna redevelop that whole mall area, is there some, some magic in having to have four hundred acres, or, I mean, ten acres or four hundred feet of frontage to do retail shopping centers? You can have smaller ones. And so, all this says is that, and it would allow somebody that has a large center and would like to sell off a portion of it to be considered a separate entity under zoning. And, 'cause like, we're into, "Well, that's not really us anymore." Well, it is. Well, it isn't. So, that's, that's the reason on the minimum lot area of a regional shopping center, there's no magic to five acres and two hundred and fifty feet, but it's less than ten acres and four hundred feet. On the maximum building coverage, again, if, if we're gonna, hopefully tonight, get rid of some of the excessive parking requirements, we're gonna have a lot of, of land that could be recaptured for other uses. And if we're gonna have a land that could be recaptured for other uses, that would mean that we would allow a larger proportion of the site to be, to have a building on it if it's not needed for parking. So, right now, we allow, you know, basically anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent building coverage. That's the footprint of the building. That's not floor area, it's just the ground floor of the building. And we're suggesting that it would be quite reasonable to increase that number to thirty-five percent, and then the business regional to be forty-five percent. It also could allow for, if you, if you wanted to build a structured parking garage, then that would also, that would be considered a building, as opposed to parking. So, that's the reason for that. Thompsonville Village Center, you, you allow eighty-five percent building coverage in Thompsonville right now. And that's sort of, and that's just kind of because that's how it is. So, some concerns that had been expressed when we talk about TOD in Thompsonville and the redoing it is, well, what if somebody combined a bunch of lots, tear down a bunch of houses, and then you get eighty-five percent lot coverage? So, what we're suggesting here is that for, in Thompsonville, existing construction, fine eighty-five percent. But if you're gonna build new, just drop it down a little bit. I said sixty-five, you could drop it down more.
I talked to him. That's what's our problem.
But that would address the issue of you're gonna combine a bunch of small lots, and you're gonna build a yamongous building on it. So, that's, that's basically what we're doing to five, what we're suggesting on five dash ten. They all kind of fit together, what we're doing here tonight. We're trying to say, move the buildings up, you know, get rid of excess parking, allow more buildings on, recapture some of those empty parking lots, put buildings on them that we can tax, and, and also address future redevelopment issues.
I think that does, because that was a major, that six- On Thompsonville especially, that was one of, that was our major problem. You and I talked about. And dropping it down helps a lot. That was a hang-up on approval with what was going on down there.
So, and again, this is, as the resolution says, we've, you know, all of them the same, everything tonight, the same way, was referred to the post in the town clerks, referred to the council of governments, referred to all the surrounding towns, advertised twice. And we have had people come in and look at, you know, look at the information and ask questions on all of them.
That's good, good. All right. Is anyone in the public wish to speak in favor or against this application?
Yep.
Anyone in the public wish to speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing none. Are there any questions in the commission? Okay, then I'll close XZA 1708.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to move that we approve XZA 17-08 changes to table 5.10 of the Enfield zoning regulations, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission initiated a zoning text amendment application to amend table 5.10 of the Enfield zoning regulations to amend certain lot and bulk minimum lot area and maximum building coverage requirements. Whereas the proposed zoning text amendment was referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment, and whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed zoning text amendments will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendments has been circulated to the surrounding communities for comment, and no comments were received, and whereas the proposed changes were advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer, and whereas a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield zoning regulations and the Plan of Conservation and Development, now therefore be it resolved, resolve, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves XZA 17-08 to amend table 5.10 of the Enfield zoning regulations in all business zones with an effective date of September 8, 2017, fifteen days after the approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed. It's unanimous. Six, zero, zero. Okay, let's move on to-
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to go back to XZA 1707, in terms of that was the freestanding tenant identification sign resolution, in terms of I should have added that as modified during our discussions. So, that, you know, basically, it's, you know, where we added the, you know, that, that we changed item B, that it should have also included-
Motion to reconsider is on the second.
Right.
Second.
Okay, do I have, the motion to reconsider you made, and it's seconded by, okay, okay.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we, we got, we had all the, our documentation correct, so that, you know.
All in favor to reconsider? Okay, now, all right, now-
Reconsider.
Okay.
To add that, those words.
Right, yeah. We're gonna modify section B to also include the adjacent, you know, the signs would have to be located adjacent to entrances slash exits of the tenant's site.
All in favor? That's good, okay.
Okay.
No, if you'll read it.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I'm glad you caught it. Okay.
Okay. XZA 1709, proposed updates to the parking regulations, Planning and Zoning Commission applicant, Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Rich Suzak is here.
Okay, Roger.
All right. I, you know, I gave you a lot of slides. We can click right through them. Just showing you empty parking lots. I mean, some people say, "Well, the mall doesn't have tenants," so we understand that.
You got a question on the front.
But on other-
We'll do that right after. Let them finish this.
So, State Line Plaza, just for the folks that are viewing it, looking in at home, we have, we, the parking regulations, you can keep moving, just click them through Broadside Plaza. You'll, all of these, you'll see, okay, stop there. So, all of, does, you know, all of us know, we drive by them, we see them. Parking regulations, basically, for years, were designed for Black Friday. And, you know, and Black Friday now, with online shopping, there's a lot fewer people going to brick and mortar stores. And, you know, the theory is that we don't, we don't pave areas for like, one or two days a year. So, we, we reviewed the standards in effect elsewhere, and we've made some changes. The other thing is that some of our standards are based upon the number of employees. So, a company comes in and says, "I've got fifty employees," and we say, "Okay, you need X amount of parking spaces." And then, you know, two months later, the business does real well, and they had twenty-five employees. But parking lot was designed for fifty. So, we tried to come, we tried to say, "Let's get away from saying based on number of employees," which, you know, can vary. And then, with people working at home, et cetera, working remotely. Also, with restaurants, I've changed this in about four or five towns in the past that works out well. Number of seats. They come in and they've got ten seats, and then all of a sudden, they got twenty seats, and so forth. And so, why do we base the number of parking based on number of seats? And so, with restaurants, we, we go to patron floor area. So, you know, we subtract the kitchen area and so forth, and we say, "This is how much room you have for somebody to actually sit down and eat in, and whether you have ten tables there or fifteen, depending on how you set it up, this will be your parking requirement." Makes it a whole lot easier for the zoning enforcement officer. So, those were the, the major changes. With respect to your shopping centers, you currently have five spaces per gross floor area. We, the standard that is used in a uniform standard today is gross leasable area. And they, every shopping center can provide gross leasable area. And so, the, we're proposing that it be four-point-oh gross leasable area. And we've done the calculations on some of the centers, and we don't believe there would be any impact. The one question that came up was the State Line Plaza with the TGIF Fridays and the Costco. They actually went to zoning board of appeals, and they got a variance, and they're at three. So, they are substantially below what the change is that we're recommending. We also looked at that Costco Plaza, and we've had conversations with the, with the owners there. A lot of the problems on, is the way that parking lot is designed, and getting in and out. And we think with some design changes in that parking lot, that people would park in areas of that Plaza that they're not currently parking in. So, that was one issue that I know the commission, after the workshop, asked me to look into. So, I just want you to know that they got a variance from ZPA to reduce their parking to three-point-oh. Your regulations are five-point-oh. We're recommending four-point-oh. So, we're comfortable. We out the last Fitzgerald-Halliday to give us their latest study that they did, and we compared it to American Planning, the, and Urban League, and two or three others. So, that's our, our suggestions. Restaurants, it would be fifteen parking spaces per one thousand square feet of patron floor area. I don't know. What do we got up here? Go back over here.
Yeah, what's in the other chart? What's in this one?
Yeah, so basically, the first table I gave you was building materials, stores, shopping centers, and restaurants. And again, the first two were designed to recapture unused parking spaces. The second allows for a measurement by size, rather than number of seats, secondary. And the third one, the next slide, what we're suggesting here is, again, instead of based upon number of employees, base it on square footage, these are like standards that are used. used, and also in industrial and warehousing. Next. And what we did on all of these is we, and Rich did, Rick did, I don't know why I'm calling you Rich tonight.
Because I do.
It's been a long night. What Rick did on many of these, we said, go take and look at what we have now, and what the new regulations would be. The one area that is industrial and warehousing, but it depends upon what's the, how you look at it, and most industrial warehousing has a certain component of office and...
Yeah, we got other work to do.
And, but again, our regulations right now are based on number of employees. So, for example, we looked at 25 Beacon Road, we looked at that 7 to 9 Angina, we, so, and we looked at over at Conval on Phoenix Avenue. Most of them, there's a slight decrease in what's required. It's interesting, because for warehousing, where we're going one space per 1,250 square feet, many of the surrounding towns are like one space for 500 square feet, which would just be an enormous amount of parking. So, you know, we did our extra homework to find out what these would be, and we're comfortable that they, that they're gonna be workable. And then the last one we just did is it jumped out at us when we were looking at these, go to the next slide, was an accessory apartment, where for some reason you had either one and a half or two spaces for an accessory apartment, which, accessory apartment is, we didn't know why you had that much parking, and it sort of...
Married couple, both working. Married couple, both working.
In an accessory apartment? Yeah, you know, it just, it's high compared to elsewhere, I mean, I would just put it in there and recommend that you consider it. So, other than that, at the present time, we didn't want to take on too much. But the important thing was that we be able to recapture some of, two things here, trying to recapture parking spaces, and put them to productive use, unused parking spaces, and the other is, you know, which is environmentally helpful as well, because we're not paving over property, and we're allowing for more sustainability. And the second is just trying to get regulations that are easier to administer on the go forward, rather than really auditing employment levels all the time.
Okay.
So, with that, I'll...
Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Any of the audience like to speak in favor against the application? Any in the audience speak in favor against the application? On the regulations, if you go, you've had them, I imagine, if you marked them out, go by section by section, if you have a problem. Start at the beginning, 10-10. It's the first page, then, anything?
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, also in the...
Well, that's what we're covering that...
Yeah, so, the last slide is just, we also made some tweaks to park area setbacks and landscaping setbacks related to parking, again, trying to shrink it a little bit so we don't have that large expanse.
Right. 10-10.01. Okay, 10-10.03, or I skipped too far, I'm sorry. 10-10.02, I saw Rich looking at this.
No, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Table, I'm sorry, 10-10.03, down here was multiple uses, I just put down good some of these changes. 10-10.04, 10-10.05. New standards, retail sales, oh, where am I? 10-10.05 is Thompsonville, right? Offsite parking. What happened down here, and I don't know, how do we do this, when we had that last survey, and I hope they aren't gonna start using that survey that we never accepted. I'm sorry, last time they did, did this, they used parking, people were using, we allowed people, let's say I owned a business down there, and I'd say, well, I can park my people up here, my customers. Well, we had about five businesses parking their customers over here.
In the same lot.
In the same lot. And nobody ever kept track of it. If it's being kept track of, I can see that. But this, what we did have, we had multiple people using the same lot. So, I don't know how you stop that unless people use it, and we say, well, that lot's full because other people are using it.
Well, when it's full, you have to park on the street.
Well, I don't know, but that's, nobody ever, no, but they came into PNC and we said, yes, you can use it. Oh, well, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my comment on that. I don't know if there's any way to control that. 10-10.6. Let's see, what's next? That keeps going.
10-10 is where we made the changes and the setbacks.
Oh, 10-10.7?
I have an issue on that one.
Okay.
V. 10-10.7-V. Is it six feet or four feet? You have a number, you have both numbers there.
Yeah, you're right.
On B?
Yes, you have in parentheses, four, and the word six.
Sidewalk, not less than six, floor. It's either six or four, which is it?
Are we on I, II, or III?
B.
10-10.7.
10-10.7-V.
Roman number, Roman number five.
It's subparagraph A, it's paragraph A, five.
No, A sidewalk.
Yeah, four or five, right.
Yeah, so it's A5.
Yeah, we said V. We're talking Roman.
Yeah, it's Roman numeral five. But we're not Romans, but, well, most of us are.
Yeah, it's four feet and not six. A sidewalk, you require four feet in your rig.
Okay, so we'll cross out the six.
That's the correct...
Cross out six.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Anything further? Okay, 10-10.8. And anything else that I, that we missed? Well, then I'll close, I guess, unless there's something else. I'll close XZA 1709. Isn't it nine?
Oh, you're right, it is nine.
With the usual that we entered into the record, everything that needed to be entered in, like as far as advertising and so forth, which is in your resolution.
Okay, people, somebody needs to make a motion.
I put forth a motion to approve XZA 17-09, updates to parking regulations, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated a zoning text amendment application to make revisions to Section 10.10 of the Enfield Zoning Regulations concerning parking and landscaping requirements, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been sent to the Capital Region Council of Governments for comment, and whereas the Capital Region Council of Governments found that the proposed zoning text amendments will have no adverse impact to surrounding communities, and whereas the amendments were advertised on two occasions in the Journal Inquirer, whereas the proposed zoning text amendment has been circulated to the surrounding communities for comment, and no comments were received, and whereas a public hearing was held on August 24, 2017, and whereas the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the overall goals of the Enfield Zoning Regulations and the Plan of Conservation and Development, now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves XZA 17-09 to revise Section 10.10 of the Enfield Zoning Regulations concerning parking and landscaping requirements with an effective date of September 8, 2017, 15 days after approval, and also to revise Section 10.10.7A-V, a sidewalk not less than four feet wide.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? No abstentions, unanimous. I want to thank the staff, and both for the presentation for the public and TV, but also for all the work that went into this on revisions. It's something that we've been trying to do for quite a while, but we're short staff, and I...
Great job, guys.
Great time, it's a great job.
On behalf of the staff, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, when you sent the email today that said you liked, and your congratulations to the team, and you only sent it to me, and I flipped it to my staff, and I said to them, take a bow.
Oh, absolutely, all of them, that's why I put team. I didn't want to give you all the credit, because I know what you've got working with you. Okay, Commissioner Correspondence, anything?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a suggestion, these two gentlemen are here, could we take out of order, this is an administrative authorization for administrative approval, it's SPR number 1721.
Motion taken out of order.
So moved.
Second. The motion's made in second, all in favor? Okay, I was wondering what they...
Yeah, so, the gentleman is here with respect to 141 Hazard Avenue.
Well, now, keep in mind, we have 11 o'clock.
Yeah, so this is, this is a five minutes, I think, because I discussed it with you, with the leadership. It's a proposed compounding pharmacy located in the Enfield Professional Park. I gave you, we have a report that Rick prepared, that you have in your packet, shows what it looks like. It's a, it's for Unit 15. A compounding pharmacy is a pharmacy where the medications are custom-prepared for individual patients with doctor's prescriptions. There's no changes to the site plan. The only comment we received was from the Water Pollution Control Authority, that they wanted to make sure that the applicant properly disposed of any of the pharmaceuticals, and they didn't end up in the water supply. So, we are recommending, we are asking for permission to, and you have a resolution to authorize the Director of Planning to administratively approve SPR 1721 with the cooperation of other departments, and particularly that they meet the requirements of the filing a disposal plan with the Water Pollution Control Authority. And the gentlemen are here to answer any questions you might have.
You had one from the fire department, right, for many of those. Be the standard authorizations that we generally give you. I, unless you want, we can have a...
No, I was just gonna ask him what the difference is between this and a regular pharmacy.
So, as I understand it, has been explained, and he can correct me, but this is if your doctor has, is providing a script that is not normally filled by a pharmacy, and so this gentleman would prepare it, so it's not so much people going in and out to a regular pharmacy. And you can elaborate as you wish, sir.
My name is Frank Edward Page, and I'm the applicant for the compounding pharmacy. And what he said is correct, we prepare medicinal products that are not available commercially, so we use raw ingredients, powders, and add them to syrups, or suppository bases, or irrigation solutions, and creams, and ointments, and we prepare customized dosage forms on a doctor's order. So, we don't have a retail, front, retail section with candy and cigarettes, or shampoo and all that stuff. It's more like a doctor's office. You walk in, and there's a reception area, and that's all the public has access to.
So, especially...
Just curious, how much volume business do you expect to do?
Excuse me?
What sort of volume do you expect to do?
We hope to do a huge volume. But, well, I say we're gonna provide waiting area for maybe four to six people, and as far as daily, it's gonna be starting from, gosh, I mean, I do that at a chain pharmacy now, and this is gonna be concentrated on only this activity. So, we're hoping to draw in prescriptions from doctors who...
Trying a new project.
I can't give you a number. Yeah.
Wish you luck, anyway.
I mean, Rich?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so you do have competition in terms of, you know, you mentioned the fact that you're working for another, you know, again, a chain pharmacy, and that you're gonna start up, you know, something that would be independent, but, you know, obviously based upon possibly your reputation, that people would come to you, recognizing that you're gonna give them, you know, more personal service and better service.
Yes, and based on relationships with doctors as well. Once they become familiar with us, that service we provide, and word gets around, we hope we build the business that way.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone's further? Okay, well, the motion would be in order to allow...
I'd like to put forth a motion to...
Allow?
Allow SPR 1721 to be, yes, I know, to be administratively approved by the Director of Planning, and with cooperation from other departments, for a compounding pharmacy to be located in the Enfield Professional Park, Building 4, Unit 15, at 141 Hazard Avenue, Map 065, Lot 076, Business Professional Zone, as well as the filing of a disposable plan with Water Pollution Control.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? No abstentions?
You can still ask your question.
And welcome to Enfield.
It's unanimous.
Are we the applicants? Are we required to file a plan with the Water Department?
Basically, basically, you talk to me tomorrow, I'll give you the contact, you call them up, you tell them what you're gonna do with it, and you work out what, you know, to their satisfaction. They just want to make sure that you're disposing it, and it's not like being flushed down into the sewers, which is a huge problem in the water supply.
Or it doesn't harm the bacteria necessary, okay. Now, going back.
Time for a three-minute break, or we want to keep plowing through?
I want to keep going. Correspondent, you can take a break.
No, no, it's fine.
We'll put Jen in touch.
No, no.
Okay, correspondent, resolution concerning the... Party of intervenor status to the Connecticut Siting Council's proposed solar generator facility at John Mack Farms. The resolution is in front of you, I got it. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, there is a proposal for a 20-megawatt electric generating facility using solar power on 100, utilizing 100 acres on a portion of the John Mack Farm. There is a handout that we gave you. In conversations with the Connecticut Siting Council, there is a provision for the town, and in particular, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Inland-Wetland Commission to play a more than just an advisory role in that. And the conversation took place between some of the, between Carol Hall, State Representative Hall, who represent that district, and the mayor, and the mayor has already talked to the town attorney about, the town should play a role, whether it's a party status or an intervenor status. Basically, what this would do is just make sure that all points of view are heard, everybody has an opportunity to... Everybody has an opportunity to be heard. I think this commission is well-equipped to evaluate potential impacts and to determine whether there are mitigating measures that could be taken. So this just expresses a sense of the commission that you would direct staff, i.e. me, to work with a number of people as listed in the resolution to ensure that one, an application is filed, which we believe will be late fall according to the... And there's no real definition of late fall. But... So that's basically what it is. It doesn't take a position for or against it. It simply says it's a significant enough project that the commission would like to participate in a formal way in the approval process.
Okay. I talked... And the intent is to, so that you know, to talk to Roger when I first spotted this, and then Roger did a lot of research off the bat and filled me in. My intent would be if we do this is to hold meetings in the area, specifically in that Broadbrook area. I know the school is closed up there. I don't know if it'd be open or we could get it open or... But at least have to find a building large enough. Maybe Hasville Memorial, I don't know. But have the meetings out in the general area so we can get those people in and they don't have to travel too far and have some others down here if it has to be the high school. I don't know. There's a lot of feeling. Well, I think we'd have more than enough, I know. But if they're small, I still would like to go in the area because there's people that really don't want to go too far. All right, it gives them a chance at least to say we can't have them tried. So if you will read this and if you want to make a motion and believe, as some of us do, that we should be intervenors, it is the whole part... The town manager... I have it here. The town manager he's talked to and the town attorney and our local representatives to the state that we do so. So I'm waiting to then... Therefore, if you want to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, well, actually a resolution concerning proposed solar power generating facility on a portion of the Jarmark Farm near Broadbrook Road, Abbey Road, Charnley Road. Whereas a 20-megawatt MW solar power generating facility has been proposed in Enfield, and whereas the facility is proposed to cover 100 acres of a 260-acre site in a residential zone with adjacent residential properties, and whereas the Connecticut Siting Council will hear a formal application to approve the facility, and whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission may participate in the approval process by requesting either intervenor status or party status, and whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission is experienced in conducting public hearings and fully evaluating the advantages and disadvantages of proposed land uses, and whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, after study of other facilities, developed regulations for smaller-sized facilities of this type, and whereas intervenor or party status will provide a local mechanism to evaluate potential impacts and design mitigation measures. And whereas there is a significant local interest in the impact on the town from this proposal, and whereas the formal participation of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will ensure that all points of view are heard and considered. Now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby request the commission staff, working with the town manager, town council, Director of Development Services, and the Office of the Town Attorney to seek intervenor status or party status on behalf of the commission with the Connecticut Siting Council. Resolve this 24th day of August 2017.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add is that if there is, you know, a benefit to being one, either an intervenor or a party, and the intervenor has his, you know, consultants paid by the applicant, then we should strive for whatever, you know, so that we can get some, you know, professional, you know, advice if we possibly can. So if there is, you know, an advantage to being an intervenor, that it would allow for, you know, us to get paid, you know, consultants to advise us, then I would sort of strive that we go for, obviously, the one where it would benefit our organization or our commission to have, you know, professional input if we did need it and that we wouldn't have to pay it out of our own pocket.
I believe, though, I think, Rich, is that the last part of this where we involved... It says, "Working with the town manager, town council, and the Director of Public Services." That that means we request of them and the town attorney that we request them to fund that, yes, that we feel that we need it. And I think that covers us.
Yeah, I think in drafting it, we tried to draft it after discussing it with commission leadership so that whatever that group decided was in the, you know, was the better route to go.
Because I don't think we should be working in a vacuum anyhow because we need these other individuals. The town council especially has town-wide, let's say, the political knowledge statewide also. It's just pulling out a whole town fathers, I guess, together.
Well, you know, when we take that resolution and forward it on, we can put this, you know, your comments that if whichever one is more beneficial and particularly there may be a need for town expenditures, then, you know, that could be included in the cover letter.
I think they probably understand that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I had a motion in the second. All in favor? It's unanimous, but away we go, I guess. Now, correspondence, anything? Oh, Roger, one thing. Linda raised it before, and I keep going by there, and I think it may even be open. The restaurant up at State Line, it's changed hands. It changed the name anyhow, and it was closed for a while. What went on or going on? Is it the same owner? I've heard things it may be.
It's the same owner. He just changed the name to Commonwealth. I would assume he came in for a sign. He's serving more supposedly upscale food. I ran into somebody who was... Had ate there.
Because Linda had asked several meetings back, and it had been closed for a while, and I thought maybe it was a different... But then there's no liquor transfer or anything, so... Oh, is that the legal answer? Yeah, that's the one that had the television.
Yeah, I don't have a legal answer, but I was told by a few people that the same gentleman owns it. And he has a restaurant up at the Cape that's named Commonwealth also.
Well, he owns the Summers Inn, too, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. I think he's headed more towards like the Summers Inn than what he had.
Do you have a sign permit or...
Yeah, we're... It's on our to-do list, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, all right, okay.
We just put it there again with a little star next to it.
All right, well, I was just wondering because I saw it open. I guess it is open now. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I noticed the parking lot on Hazard Avenue where there's been a vacant gas station for years, and there have been different proposals. I think there was a seafood place proposed for that area. The parking lot's been ripped up.
That's Coal Harbor with Joe Lanzieri.
Yeah.
He believed he had the right to go in and do some site work. We... So we received several complaints. I talked to him. His wetland permit never went into effect. His P&amp;Z application was withdrawn at this place. So he had scraped up all of the asphalt and everything there, and it was sitting there. So what we worked out with him is if he put in an anti-tracking patch or the trucks thing and put up silt fences, that he could haul out the stuff that's sitting there. He can't do anything else until, A, he goes back to the Wetlands Commission and B, comes to this commission. So he's, you know, he was sort of under what I call a soft cease and desist. It's like, hey, you jumped the gun. So...
Several calls on and they called around.
Yeah, there was... There were quite a few calls.
He had piles of...
There was also a site that was contaminated. It was on a DEP contaminated site. So he's been very cooperative with us, and so that was his instructions, is put in silt fences and put in an anti-tracking patch so you don't track mud out into the main road. You can clear the debris that you've already piled up, but you can't do anything else.
That's a restaurant with porta potties. Okay, anything further? Yeah, if you see something like that, call Roger. It's immediate. I called him today. I had looked out the window and there was the officer there right off the bat. So...
I told him it was a concerned citizen that complained.
Yeah, well. Okay, thank you very much, anyway. Director, Commissioner's Correspondence, I guess that was it. Director of Planning?
At quarter to 11 at night, I would like to thank my staff. I do have one item that Jen would like me to bring up at this hour, so blame her. This is Aldi's. Remember Aldi's? And so we told them the sign had to be down here. And so what they would like to do, again, because they're trying to attract attention, is they want to know if they put this material up above there, would you consider that a sign? Because, I'm sorry, this side. And in many communities, if you have attractive something around a sign, that is a sign. So it's a judgment call. We looked at this side and like we took a smartphone and opened it up and lit it to see what happened, and of course, there's a glare from it.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be tough. This one, you don't get the glare. But so...
Sunshine enough there.
The question really becomes, and this is, you know, this is why we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of you sitting there, is, and I can bring it up, but if this is up in this triangle, is that a sign?
That's an awful lot of background.
Is it going to have all these on it? Are they going to put all these on it?
That goes in the back, and then the sign would be in front of it.
There is going to be at all the sign up here.
It had to stay down here.
In front of it, yeah, but it's not attached. It's like, basically, the silver is a backdrop so that it pops more. Want to put it up into the peak.
As long as it's flat.
Well, another one to paint it, they want it to be silver and shiny, so...
Well, not shiny, but silver is all right, but not shiny.
Well, the shiny shine would be tough, so...
So is that the entire triangle above?
That's horrible.
Well, is that the giant triangle?
Yeah, they want to put it into the peak, and they want to know if that would be considered a sign.
But the others aren't that. Aren't the others common... The others are a common color.
Right. So this is the design district.
So wait a second.
And so you can approve their design.
That's horrible. That's horrible if you've got all these other that have the peaks and all the other peaks are the same.
So this will be put down, and the sign will be on top of it?
No.
That's what I thought.
They want something to draw attention. People go by and see.
Jen said it was on there.
But how about the whole rest of the mall?
The sign is a separate entity that goes in front of the silver, where you see the gray shaded area.
Yeah.
That's where the...
So it's not in the peak?
To the two sides.
Just a background.
It's not in the peak. It is in the peak.
The silver goes up into the peak.
Yeah.
Okay.
Completely surrounding it.
And then the sign goes over it.
Many communities would consider that all one.
That's a sign. And but you've got to really take this along with the rest of the mall, too.
My inclination was to say no.
No, I would...
You guys decide.
No, it's... Yeah, because it's the rest of the mall that goes with it, too. And you'd have this one outstanding, which I can see it's there. They draw attention. Yeah, all these Aldis.
So how is that different if they just painted it?
But they have a paint code, I believe, for the whole mall.
Oh, there's a consistent...
Color theme. There's a color theme for the whole mall, for the whole shopping plaza.
And I don't know if even the mall would have control over that. I really don't. It would depend on their lease.
But you remember the guy who came and presented it?
Oh, yeah. He had his own opinions about us, too.
That's a different guy now, you said, though.
Well, no, they don't let him come here anymore.
But that's my opinion. It doesn't go with the rest of the mall.
All right, so we have a sense of the commission?
I guess.
All right.
Okay. That was application 2874, 53 Manning Road.
53 Manning Road is an interesting situation because the application is basically for a public warehouse again, which we already told them there's no such thing as a public warehouse. It's self-storage. It also includes outdoor storage surrounded by an eight-foot fence with barbed wire on it, on top of it. And the...
That is creative.
The application says it's allowed as an accessory use to a site plan. It's not allowed as an accessory use in your regulations. Elsewhere in the application, it says it's allowed by special permit. Now, the commission has heard similar proposals as a special permit in the past. However, in researching this application, in many zones, you have that section where you say that if the commission determines the use is similar, then it can be heard as a special permit. That section does not exist in that zone. So the question really that the commission has to decide, and I'm not asking you to decide it tonight, but I don't know what section of the regulations you would hear the application under.
Well, he's picked and he's gone through the whole zoning regulation and picked all the sections from anywhere.
Well, you did hear it previously as a special, you know, what happened, they applied as a site plan, and we said, "No, it's not a site plan. If anything, it's a special permit." But it really isn't a special permit either. And so... And, you know, the question was, remember, they came in and they gave the four different reasons why it's self-storage, and we reviewed them and said, "No, it doesn't pass muster at all." So you've already made the determination that it's... That self-storage is not warehousing. And there's a difference between warehousing and self-storage. And now the application is back in, and it says, "Well, public warehousing is allowed as an accessory use to a site, to a site plan, to a warehouse," which it isn't. Then it says in some other section that we're applying for a special permit. But again, in many of the sections, you could hear something that you can... That you determined was similar. So I can see where they could say, "Well, okay, in a BL zone, you have that ability."
So what are you saying?
In this zone, in this zone, you don't have that ability. So, you know, I'm just raising the issue with you. When you receive the application, bear that in mind.
Why do we accept the application, then?
Well...
Roger, you have to accept an application.
You have to accept it.
Or what?
But as our liaison, can you send a letter so that we have something in our packet to the person and say to them, "We all feel..."
Right. My intent was to send them a letter and say, "You know, can you clarify into what section of the regulations that you're applying?"
Because I don't see it.
Yeah, that's what I want to know. Yeah, that's what I want to know. What do we, what do we listen to?
Yeah.
Or even what do we base a decision on?
Right. Just giving you a heads up so that you can consider it.
Okay. How about the next one?
I'm sorry.
23 Manning.
Second driveway?
Where are we?
That's a house, a second driveway.
Somebody's health.
Oh, that's, that's on Manning Road as well, and that's where the gentleman originally told that woman she could have her RV over on his property, and then Rick, this is Mr. Labonte, was allowing her to park it over on his site. And when this was before you, a few applications back, you guys went out and were looking at the site and said, what's all these other things doing over here?
Up against a tree.
And so she needed to park her RV someplace, so she's, and so she parked it in her driveway, and then Rick said, no, you can't park it in your driveway.
That's right.
And so now she's, wants to make a second driveway, basically, to park her RV. That's what that application is. And a second driveway is a special permit.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is on Manning Road, a second driveway to allow one of the residents to park their RV.
There are several places in town that allow RV parking. Is one down?
Well, on the, under, under the proposal that we have to decide what section of the regulations you would hear it under, that area that's got the six-foot fence with the barbed wire around on top would be to store RVs. But you don't allow a six, an eight-foot fence with barbed wire.
Oh, we don't know, that's what I, I don't know about the RV.
And the second thing that was with that application is, you recall the whole issue about the building code, and they went and got us a building code modification. The fire marshal has commented that just because they have a, and they would need a fire code modification, which they don't have, so that may take them some time as well, so.
Those fires are jumping off the roof.
Yeah, this was the one they were jumping off the roof. They now have a, now, we asked, we asked for, before they came back, a stairway, a second stairway, and the application, I believe, says it's a ladder.
Okay. All right. That takes care of those two. The last one's 1723. This is, this is the gunshot that's moving down to the bank on Enfield Street.
The police department has asked for a site plan on that, and, you know, they came in and they said, we're not, we're not changing the site plan at all. So they only submitted a floor plan and a narrative. The police department said they believe they should have a site plan, if nothing else, to say where things are. So I believe that they are going to be preparing a site plan.
I was going to ask you, you've notified them of that.
Yes, yes, we have, and their representative came in to review old site plans.
Okay. Okay.
None of those are on for next meeting, then?
Finally, on the sand and gravel thing on Long Hollow Road.
You're at, I haven't seen it yet, but 1723 is going to be in as a public hearing.
What's that?
The gunshot.
It is, it will be a public hearing, yes.
It's a public hearing, but it's still a site plan.
Long Hollow Sand and Gravel, we talked about several times. We, and, you know, they have to come in under aquifer protection, grinding up asphalt, and even a, even a mining operation is covered under aquifer protection. They do have to do that, they have to come in for the second driveway. They also are in violation of zoning regulations with the stockpiling of the, of the Jersey barriers and sewer pipe. They're also changing the grade of the, out there without a permit, an excavation, a regrading permit. We reviewed the entire situation with the town attorney's office this past week, and we're authorized to move forward on cease and desist on all of those matters, and that will be going out this week.
We have any opportunities, unresolved issues, other business?
Mr. Chairman, NBC News wanted to interview the planning office this past week because of a nationwide story they were doing on chickens. And they specifically wanted to know how many chicken, how many places in Enfield we had chickens.
We don't know.
And we don't know, there's no way of knowing. The only thing I could have said if we had agreed to that interview was there is one woman who currently has 50 chickens, and she has an application in wanting to know how does she go to 400 chickens. Ginny may know this person because it's the duck farm, I believe.
Post office?
Huh?
Is it post office or?
You would know the property.
Okay.
And so she has, so we haven't researched that yet, but I'm not sure how you go from 50, 50 chickens to 400 chickens.
I, you know, the problem is, we have, and I saw some pictures in the paper of people that were showing at the Tyland, Tyland 4H Fair, and there were kids from Enfield that were showing animals, and that's all I'm trying to do is help these kids. These, some of these were larger animals, which are entirely different. One was a cow and another's a goat, but.
Well, there's some kind of a, a, a mimic going around with the chickens. That's why they were interviewing them. You touch them and you get salmonella.
Well, yeah, but there was, there was another thing, too, that was in the paper.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Anyway, that's the.
Motion to adjourn?
I don't see a quorum here. Suggest the absence of a quorum.
What, I didn't hear it.
Adjourn.
Well, who made them all? Those are motions made in second, all in favor? And we're about, well, we'll say we're right on the dot.
I know. We're never going to make.